We're going to continue this session, so if you could simmer down, hold it down in the back. Hello? Hold it down. Okay, we're ready for your presentation. Ms. Stevens, welcome. Mr. Ameral, welcome. And let's go through.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Lynn Stevens. I'm Deputy Director of Stormwater and Engineering. I'm also your liaison to the Residential Drainage Citizens Advisory Committee. So the committee is here today to give you a presentation and a report of their activities thus far. So one of the first things we wanted to do was... I don't know. Okay, okay, okay. The first thing we wanted to do is introduce your committee members. We have Donna Stansel. She's the Chair of our committee. We have Rich Cooper behind me. He's our Vice Chair. Mara Worth is one of our committee members. She was not able to be with us this evening. We have Tony Ameral Jr. as a committee member. Tracy Domke is behind me as a committee member. And Jessica Voorhees is one of our alternate committee members. And those are the members that we have for our committee at this particular time. So I wanted to go through... She's getting me grief today. We wanted to talk a little bit and give some of the new council members a background on what an infill lot is and how we got where we are. When ITT first created Palm Coast, there was 48,476 platted lots within our city. Approximately 9,000 were vacant, and the infill lots are the platted lots that are either vacant or have been cleared for construction or actively under construction but not yet finished. So if you look on our map here where you see the vacant lots, those would be the ones that would be considered an infill lot, those that are being built next to existing homes. The city inherited a residential drainage system policy from the county and ITT when we became a city in 1999. These policies only required a builder to certify that water would not drain onto the adjoining lots. There are no documents indicating drainage inspections were performed that we could find during construction of the homes built. The builder's focus at the time was to maintain the finished floor 12 inches above the crown of the road and to shed all water away from the foundation of the home. So in 2005, the city created the first stormwater department and began conducting stormwater inspections. Prior to 2005, the stormwater system was managed by Palm Coast Community Service Corporation. In 2023, there was an influx of flooding concerns from our residents primarily due to construction of the infill lots next door. From October 2023 to February 2024, 174 cases were logged as infill lot issues. In other words, those that were having severe water on their lot that they suspected was coming from construction or the lots next door that were under construction or recently completed. Other cases have come in but have been reclassified because the primary concern involved something other than an infill lot issue. Seventy-three percent of the homes impacted by the infill lots were built prior to the city maintaining the stormwater system and prior to the city performing review or inspection of new home drainage. And the graph up there kind of shows you that majority of the cases that we viewed were built either 2000 or prior. So once we conducted all of the inspections, by the way, every one of the 174 homes were visited by city staff. We had two groups of two people that visited each and every site. When we went to the site, we had a set of prepared questions. We asked how long... the year the house was built, how long they lived in that particular house, a full description of the yard flooding issues, how long the water stands in their yard, how long the issue has existed, where on the property the water remained, and does the water enter the house or another structure on the property such as a patio, pool, or shed? And we also asked if they had flood insurance. Sometimes staff offered suggestions on how a homeowner could mitigate their own issues of water, such as redirecting their gutter outlets or removing conveyance obstacles. A lot of times, we saw sheds, we saw sidewalks, other items that were in the way of the conveyance system to get the water to the front of the property. Staff also reviewed drainage plans for the home that was under construction that may be adjacent to the home that was experiencing water. In the existing home, and we also looked at some other pertinent information regarding the property, such as other permits that were pulled since the original home was built. The case was then placed into one of the categories listed. And if they had only standing water in the yard, they were put in this bucket. If they had a concern or just a question about the finished floor elevation of the home next door, they were stuck in this bucket. If their concern was not related to a new build or did not correlate to the construction of a home surrounding their property, they were put in a different category. If water entered the home or another structure on their property, then they were put into a different category. We also had another category that was at the time that we collected this data in February 2024, where we had not visited 100% of the cases at the time. Since then, all visits have been completed. So just to give you a little bit of other background, the city staff took these concerns very seriously from our residents. And like I said, it started around August, September of 2023. An internal task force was formed to evaluate the issues, and this was internal staff as well as stormwater engineering, city manager, building department, and some other city staffers. Staff then reviewed the engineering technical manual, which established finished floor and drainage plans for new construction to see if changes could be made to improve the issues surrounding the new home construction. Changes in the technical manual in February 2024 included a finished floor no more than 10 inches higher than the lowest adjacent home, and that was on the left or right side of the construction site. The finished floor could be no more than 22 inches above the crown of the road unless specifically authorized by the city engineer. And I've often been asked, well, under what circumstances would you authorize that? And that had to do with the surrounding area. So some of our roadways have already where the existing homes are more than 22 inches above the crown of the road. So we didn't want a home really low compared to the surrounding homes. So that would enable us to give them that exception. The edge of the property was changed from the edge of the road or to the edge of the road instead of the crown of the road, which also helped us lower the properties about six inches on average. And know that it is our requirement that all water needs to flow to a stormwater conveyance system that's existing for the new construction site. Majority of the time, that stormwater conveyance system is the swale in the front yard. Some locations have a ditch on the side, or they may have a canal in the back, and that would also be an acceptable drainage conveyance. The city council then formed the Residential Drainage Citizens Advisory Committee. So at this point, I've given you the history, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tony Ameral Jr., and he's going to update you on the activities of the committee thus far.
Good evening, Council. As was stated before, the committee is currently five members with one alternate. The opportunity for more members is still out there. It exists, but we have not received any further applications at this point. As the slide says, the main objectives were investigate what was happening with the residential flooding issues, what was the cause, investigate potential solutions and funding opportunities, and we've done that. So we first started by gathering information to better understand all the issues that were presented. This slide is showing some of the information. We explored FEMA grants. FEMA grants only apply to the residents who are uninsured or have water inside the living space of the home. We were presented by Jackie Gonzalez for the Community Development Block Grant Program, who gave us an option for people who had income limitations, but yet we've recommended all residents should ask and inquire about their eligibility, again, going through Jackie Gonzalez. We had a presentation from Urban Forestry on how working or planting certain shrubbery trees and everything else could definitely alleviate or minimize the amount of standing water, mostly in the yard for that situation. Yeah, sorry. We had a presentation by the Home Builders Association, which provided information, a history, if you will, of where we were, where we are, where we were over a year ago, and actually the changes that were made. Before we had our first meeting, it was in February. We met first time in June of 2024, and as Lynn had mentioned earlier, those implementations that took effect in February of 2024. During this presentation, Dan Wilcox, who's from Stevenson, Wilcox &amp; Associates, a surveying company that's been around this community for years and years and years, volunteered to provide 30 free property drainage plans with surveys to the 30 most affected houses. Those were six houses that had water actually inside the home and 24 that we had recognized as having water either on their porches, pool areas, or even sheds. So what we noticed was, prior to 2006, no real adverse impacts were noticed because neighboring vacant lots provided more space for water to disperse and be absorbed by the vegetation on that vacant lot. Then through the years, the city developed a residential drainage guideline from scratch because, again, we mentioned, we inherited the county... actually, we inherited technically ITT's first drainage idea, and then the county's version of it before we became a city. And even then, it took us four years before we were fully responsible for building drainage, everything. And it's been built from scratch and proceeds to fine-tune the system as we saw last... well, February 2024, based on issues, and is always using the best practices of the time enforcement. Unfortunately, we've recognized that when the older home, which the majority of them were, and the new home construction are next to each other, the drainage issues can occur. Most of the time, these issues are found to be due to numerous causes, such as previous natural areas in the backyards that were allowed, that were no longer natural, and it took down the trees and left in a low state, either before the current owner or even with the current owner, as we... I remember one resident had that, and she loved it. Then we had the installation of items in the original stormwater conveyance systems, soil, compaction, trees that had been removed, and the roots were finally decaying and forming a depression in the yard, which was standing water there. A few of the homes, we did refer to code enforcement for further action because it was a belief that there could have been an impact from the new home flowing onto the existing property, or the original berm design to prevent that was no longer in place. The committee has recommended what came out as the DIRT program, donation program. As you can see in the slide, 79 residents participated, two from the infill list, approximately 270 cubic yards were provided. It is something that the board might think, you know, staff and council might think of doing again at a time, you know, if you're choosing, to alleviate some of more of the standing water areas in existing yards. So the committee has also reviewed, which is the new culvert policy for code enforcement. And at our last meeting, we agreed that the policy we liked of solving the... you know, it's the green, yellow, red. I believe you guys have gotten that already? Yes. In favor of it, it works. We believe it'll work and that for the future, it is a way for code enforcement to actually enforce the process. As we're getting close, we've already reviewed 28 out of the 30 surveys, or people have decided not to come in. But the committee does want to work, and it has been asked to work with code enforcement in providing guidance and identifying and resolving issues of water flowing onto an adjacent lot and what the guidelines are and the processes that would be done for code enforcement to step in and help alleviate that issue. That's all we have. Just gives a rundown of what we've been doing. Actually, June 4th, we... one year, we actually scheduled a meet on that one-year anniversary of us getting together. Any questions or even guidance that you'd like us to take from there? We do sunset in February of 2026 unless otherwise provided.
Thank you, Mr. Ameral. Bring it back to the dais. Any questions? Vice Mayor, you got anything?
My only question is, so I understand the new culvert policy. It seems to me from looking at everything... well, first of all, thank you to all of you for the time that you donated, and thank you to Stephen Wilcox for their very gracious donation. That was... that's an awesome community outreach, and just cannot thank them enough. From what you all have seen, it doesn't... so the culvert policy doesn't seem like it's going to... I think it's necessary, let me say that. But it doesn't seem like it's going to alleviate some of the issues that people have had because they were previously shedding water on a neighboring property that's now built on that they can't shed water on, or they put sheds in their backyard, they've taken trees out, things like that, that have really caused water to pool more. It doesn't seem like the culvert policy is going to address that. So I just want to make sure that that culvert policy is not being implemented as a fix to those things. It's just something that we say, this can fix the overall operation of our system. Is that... am I... do I have the right line of thinking there?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the culvert policy will do nothing for the water issues in people's yards from adjacent properties. The culvert policy, it was... we just asked the committee to review that policy just because they have experience with issues. They've researched the stormwater system. They have an outside view of what the city... what the stormwater department is doing, and they would be able to provide us a different perspective. So you are correct. It has nothing to do with residential infill lot drainage issues. It was just a courtesy. We asked them to take a look at it for some input. The culvert policy is simply for our protocols for inspecting culverts and how we notify the resident of a failing culvert.
Okay. So then my concern is, moving forward, how do we educate homeowners? Because I'll be honest, before this, if I had a tree in my backyard, I wouldn't have... and I wanted to take it out. I wouldn't have thought, if I take this tree out, it could cause some severe ponding or flooding of water in my backyard.
You would rely on that contractor to probably provide some of that information, right?
Maybe, but I don't think a contractor is going to say, hey, don't pay me $3,000 to remove that tree.
I understand what you're saying.
They're not going to do that, right?
We're laypeople is what I'm getting at.
Right. Yeah, so I'm wondering if in the... so let me ask this. When somebody puts a shed in their backyard or they remove a tree, do they have to get a permit for those things?
Depends on the size of the shed.
I've done both.
I thought they did, but...
It's an auto, depending on the size, I think. It's an auto permit for under 100 square feet, and then if it's greater, then it's an actual permit that has to be approved.
So I think there needs to be an education campaign that goes into this. So in other words, when somebody applies for a permit to do one of those things, we need to educate them. You can, but this is what could happen if you do, because we know this now. And we know that a lot of people have encountered these issues when they're doing things that I think everyday homeowners contemplate doing, and they don't know what that repercussion could look like. So I think it's almost incumbent upon us, now that we know this, and we know that a lot of people don't know this, to maybe create a brochure or a one-pager or something like that that says, hey, you can do this, but this is what could happen if you do. That's just my suggestion.
We do have a stormwater brochure that does talk about some impacts of property owners and what can happen if you make changes. One of the next steps of the committee is to work with code enforcement, and it may morph into something other than, how do you enforce water coming onto my property? What does that look like? How is that established? That whole thing is the next step for the committee. So it's probably something else they could look at is fences, for example, fences that go all the way down to the ground. And the fences are in the drainage easement between two properties. How does water then travel from the back to the front when there's a fence stopping it and it's all the way down to the ground? So that's something else that the committee will probably work with code enforcement on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think something that's wrong with the design of the city is, like over in the B section up by Berta Paradise, I forgot his name. But the properties are butted up. You got fences butted up to one another with no easement between the fences for the water to go. And if everyone has a vinyl fence that goes all the way to the ground, that water's going to stay there because it's a catch basin, really.
Sure.
So that's something we... I think we need to explore that as far as easements between properties that are butted up against one another in the back. Now, in the B section, we had a little... in our old house, we had... there was a small refuge back there, I guess, and we had a drainage ditch. But a lot of these properties, especially up near Berta Paradise, they're all butted up against one another, and that's not conducive for water flow. Yes, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to Lynn and the committee, thank you for volunteering your time. I mean, the committee was formed before most of us got on this council, but you were giving broad guidance, and you came up with solutions. And I think it worked for some of the residents. I mean, I think there's still some cases out there that we know for sure, you know, they need more help, or it's not a one-size-fits-all, but you came to the table with something tangible, and I think that's of value and, you know, much appreciated. And the fact that you use your... you leverage your relationships and your networks to get them involved, to help out our residents where they didn't have that kind of support before. So I just wanted to say that it's valued, and thank you. And Mr. Ameral, you mentioned that the committee sunsets in February of 26. Just spoke with Ms. Stansel during the break. What's kind of the thought of the committee and whether or not the work needs to continue? I know there's code enforcement next steps. Would appreciate your thoughts on whether or not the committee should continue the work or should it sunset, or, you know, open to suggestions?
So we had this conversation at our last meeting. So this committee, and mostly these people behind me, we met like every two to three weeks. It was an ongoing, quickly, surveys were coming. Once we established what was the problem or were able to narrow down what the problem was, moving it forward, getting the surveys, then we scheduled a schedule just every two or three weeks of just meeting, having the conversations with the homeowners. Like I said, where 28 out of 30 are done, I believe the other two may be already scheduled to come in. We are probably going to go to a less strict, probably just the once a month, and then work with code enforcement on that. And then really, we're at the guidance of, you know, I believe, and I believe our council, our committee does, that we're at the guidance of you all on where you want us to go. We are, again, we believe, as we're talking to the last meeting, once we do the code enforcement, that should get us to February, and that would be a whole new... hey, we're kind of at what we thought was the end of our run and then opening it up to you all to see what you would look to have.
Okay, so everybody agrees with that? I mean, it sounds like you guys feel that you've met the mandate, the intent of the establishment of the committee.
I believe so, yes.
But that's it. Mr. Mayor, just really wanted to say thank you for the work that you've done, but would be open to what the council members think.
Thank you, sir.
Not much, because I came into this after the fact. Thank you for all your work you've done in the report. As far as I can see, it's excellent, thorough, covered the problem areas, the significant problem areas, and I'm just going to leave it at that because I think that's where I am.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Stevens, unrelated, you guys are doing a great job out there, and I think I sent out that message asking about, you know, ongoing evaluation with the rain that we're starting to get now, and you got your crews out checking and, you know, getting word if there's problem areas. And I haven't had a chance to look at the spreadsheet, but everyone has to understand. Ms. Stevens sends out bi-weekly updates on swells that she's taking care of. So I really appreciate your crews that are out there doing what they can to get us ready for storm season.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else from the council?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you, reiterate that, that everybody else said. Also, as far as the culvert policy, I appreciate the thought process of kind of giving a little bit more grace to residents. You know, in this situation, a lot of the aprons of driveways are very old, in some cases 40 or 50 years old, and they've started to collapse and things like that. And by nature of those houses being old, typically that is an older resident that's on a fixed income. So having the ability to shoulder a large burden of trying to replace a driveway in a culvert, you know, that can be upwards of $10,000 to $15,000, depending on the situation. So I appreciate that in those cases, we're going to give a larger runway in terms of our code enforcement and the request to get that done, considering that. But as part of our renewed inspections of the entire system and the cleanings and things like that, we're now going to discover more of these same problems. So it's important that we have kind of this policy that allows everybody some time and grace to get the fix done in an unexpected way.
And we have doubled the amount... we added a second culvert crew in October last year. So in doing so, of course, we've doubled the amount of culvert cleanings and inspections, which has increased the amount of issues that we found.
Doubled the amount of code enforcement issues, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else in the dais? We'll open up for public comment.
My name is Dennis Sakal. I live in the F section. I've lived here for 14 years. I moved here because of the codes and all the rules and regulations in Palm Coast because it was a nice place, too. I've been coming down here since 82. Like I said, I've been here 14 years. The newest problem I see, and it's affected my quality of life, is a short-term rental. I have one right behind me, and it's been going on since the second week of March. I've had the police there five times. This weekend, I didn't even wait because it takes two hours for the cops to go over there and shut them up because it's got a pool in the back that's heated, and they're partying. This Saturday night, I just went outside and I yelled at them after I got through all the pot smoke that was in my backyard on my lawn. And I said, you know, this is a neighborhood. I said, I'm trying to sleep. I got to go to work in the morning. I said, and what's going on here? This is ridiculous. Now, I've contacted the owner, the manager, and she don't care. She lives on the same street on Fleetwood. The address for this house is 47 Fleetwood. I live at 91 Fort Caroline Lane. And also, it's also in a stellar living house that's four feet above all the rest of them. You built my house on 91 Fort Caroline Lane. There's no database on how many times the police are at this house. I went and seen Barbara Grossman. I said, you know, I have five times I call the cops. I said, during the week? It don't matter. They're renting for a week. They're down here to party, and that's all they're doing. And I'm at the point where I'm going to sell my house, but I'm not. I'm going to fight, and no matter who I got to take down, I'm going to take down. I got a lot of money. I'm an old man with a lot of money. I'm 70 years old, and I'm not moving. I'm not moving. I don't have the energy, but I have the energy to fight, and I have the money to fight. So whoever thought that this was a good idea for this short-term rental needs their heads examined. And until it comes into your backyard, it's no big deal. But it is a big deal. It's ridiculous that I have to get up in the middle of the night, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, to call the cops or to tell these people to shut up. It's stupid. Anybody that's coming down here for a week, go to the hotel. In the hotel, I'd rather have a 100-room hotel behind me than this party house because the hotel will have a manager, and there's rules at the pool. After 11 o'clock, you don't make noise. 3 o'clock in the morning? Now, I'm going to go right back to sleep? I don't think so. I'm boiling until the sun comes up. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. It's gotta stop. It's big money. It's LLCs, it's VRBO, that's big money, big corporations, and they're gonna kill this town. You gotta get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Grossman, can you have a conversation with him and let's see if we can get some resolution to this? We have the new short-term rental ordinance that's in effect. Yes, sir?
Jim Black in C section. I've been up here in front of you guys many times regarding the swells and the culverts, trying to get it to be a zero maintenance, not a perpetual maintenance line item. Thank you, guys, for your work. Mr. Ameral, I'd like to speak with you after all. You have openings, and I might want to join and help and see what I can do also. Other issues come when you have flooding and storm issues, and it's called the Q10-Q100 effect, where rain dumps and you don't have the proper drainage system per home, which means your rain gutters usually, because the house doesn't absorb any. Each lot of land has X amount of square feet. Your roof coverage covers usually 30, 40, sometimes 60%. You have hardscape, which now is taking it to the softscape. Softscape can't handle it. It floods, builds up, has to go somewhere. Area drains around a house would be fantastic if the landscapers would actually create a culvert around with a high pod in the back and bring it to the front of the house and out into your culverts. This would be tied into your drainage system from your roof, the gutters and the drops. Drop it into a pipe, 4-inch pipe, leads out, cut it at a 45, dump it into the swells out front, and you pretty much can control a lot of the nuisance water on your own property as well as it affecting other properties where now, a lot of people just drop it down and they put a little kick out and a little hose halfway out, and it goes on to your neighbor's yard. Not very cooperative, not a good neighbor. I think that your suggestion of getting a flyer when people are coming and getting undersized building permits, yeah, usually those, you know, disclosures of effects, it's down low. But it is a big thing here in Florida. You get 50 inches of rain, it's a lot of rain, it's gonna cause swell issues. Make that a top priority. Put an additional sheet on top of it. One piece of paper, one staple every time, you're gonna solve a lot of problems on the nuisance water and the flooding on individual properties. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one, yes, ma'am.
I have a public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I have sat here and listened to all of this.
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is Sheila Hines. I'm from the famous R section. I've been a resident here for 30 years, and at one time I was in the building business. I worked for Seagate. I'm very familiar with Mr. Ameral here. Worked for Palm Coast Holdings, built a lot of houses around here. I'm a permitting expert. So when, I'd like to know what happened because at one time we had a fall from the back of the lot to the front of the lot, and thus we have our swells. Well, I don't see that happening anymore. I have a house across the street that's got, swear to God, a berm just high from his neighbors, from his yard to this yard. Where's the water going? I'm sorry, where's the water going? Why are these berms being put in the middle on the property line? I don't understand. We had a 2-inch fall from the back of the yard, and as you said, a berm around the house. Am I correct in saying this? Has this gone away now? Because I see these homes, some of them are way too high, I agree with that, and many cities are dealing with this right now, and they're lifting the homes up. Well, you're creating a whole nother problem when you do that. But I don't understand why the fall is not there anymore on your survey, because I'm seeing these homes that they have a berm on the side of their yard. So that's my comment. I'm wondering what happened to the permitting process? Because at one time, the permitting process, I'd go out with Stevenson surveying, we'd survey the land, I can read surveys. The fall goes to the swell, that's the purpose of our swell. What happened? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Any closing comments? Anything?
I guess the committee goes on till at least February.
Yes, sir. You're gonna continue on, right, Mr. Ameral, Ms. Stevens? You're gonna have your monthly meetings and present to us as necessary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is for community development residential site inspections. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. As kind of one of the residents was mentioning about the process of our inspections, we made a change internally where the stormwater inspectors no longer report to the stormwater department, they are now under the building department. This has increased our efficiency and then allows our chief building official to work with the permit issuer, with whoever it is, whether it's builder, et cetera, and just apply more eyes on what's happening and various processes. So Patrick's gonna go through his presentation. I did also want to mention that I had a request from a resident. I received an email that they are here with a young child and would like to listen to the chicken presentation before it gets too late in bedtime, but I just...
I've been here since... She has been so well behaved, I have to tell you. I have thought numerous times, that child has been so well behaved.
So that's up to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Buckley, how long do you think your presentation's gonna take?
About 10 minutes.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, and then we'll move up the backyard chicken, the next item on the agenda. Consensus on that?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Buckley, go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Patrick Buckley. I'm the chief building official and manager of the building division. As City Manager Johnston said, we made some changes to how we're conducting business between the building department and our stormwater inspectors. This has largely involved a reorganization of the stormwater plan review and inspections as they relate to residential reviews and inspections. That's one and two-family dwellings, not townhouses, not multifamily, not commercial. The underlying intent of the changes are to see an improved oversight and regulatory control of home builder responsibilities related to the city's stormwater plan review and inspection processes for new residential construction. The stormwater inspectors work closely and are aligned with the building division in sofar as their plan review and inspection processes are consistent with the building division's processes. And a lot of information flows through the building department related to permits, so that's a natural occurring process and underscores the need for our alignment together. The changes include moving the residential stormwater and right-of-way inspectors from the stormwater and engineering department to the building division. That began in February with the transfer of personnel and equipment and was completed by the end of March. Those folks became a new division in community development known as residential site development, and their positions have changed to residential site inspectors. There are six full-time equivalent positions with that division. And important to note is they do operate under a separate budget, separate from the building division. Due to Florida statutes that essentially mandate the use of building permitting revenue being plan review and inspection fees are for the direct enforcement of the Florida Building Code only, the division has a separate budget, and that'll be first in community development in 2026, so we're working on that now. The several process changes and enhancements were identified as part of this transition, including both the plan review and inspection processes. Again, to make sure that we're providing the appropriate level of regulatory control for home building, trying to solve problems and make sure that the storm drainage is being handled according to the city's standards. They are significant, the changes are, and we think that they will increase accountability and compliance with the city's standards. We also think that the shared responsibilities between the residential site inspectors and building inspectors will be able to improve the service levels, and we'll be able to grow the division over time. I think I went on the wrong slide there. Yes, I was one slide ahead, I'm sorry for that. So the first change that went into effect in mid-March was a move away from our foundation surveys to a form board survey. The foundation of surveys, of course, were post-construction, right after the foundation was poured and constructed. And then we were getting the certification, sometimes in error, on that completed work. So we moved away from the foundation surveys to a pre-construction form board survey. The intention here is to eliminate the elevation mistakes in completed foundation construction. We do this through holding our inspections, not allowing them to proceed to pour their foundations until they submit a form board survey. We review it, turn it around, and approve it. And if it's correct, the change is having a desired effect. We failed several submittals so far since March for FFEs, finished floor elevations being out of tolerance with one or more of the city's criteria, which you heard in the previous presentation. We've had a couple that have come in more than 2/10ths high or low from the proposed FFE, or more importantly, more than 10 inches above the adjacent lowest FFE. And so now we're catching those before they are being constructed, and we refuse approval of their form board surveys. Their obligation is to make the adjustments, have that resurveyed, and then submit that document to us. The other change is moving away from final surveys prepared by land surveyors to final lot grading and drainage certificates. This is intentional as well. It's moving the work away from the surveyors and assigning it to professional engineers. Grading and drainage plans importantly are engineering design and not surveyor design, and we need the engineers to be involved with these grading plans up front and then certification on the back end. So the process includes inspections from the city inspectors, residential site inspectors. They will do less work on what they were doing as field surveys, and instead will be verifying the final lot grading and drainage certificates and the as-built conditions. They will also share the inspection load where appropriate with our building inspectors. And again, we are moving away from the staff being responsible to certify the grading conditions and assigning that work to professional engineers. It's a heavy reliance on engineering design on the front end as a grading and drainage plan, and then certifying that grading and drainage plan on the back end when the house is complete. You received in your packets, I believe, a copy of the draft of our final grading certification. Right now, there's 33 criteria that the engineers have to check. That's all taken from the city's stormwater technical manual, excuse me, the city's technical manual in the stormwater section. And they have to initial each one of those items. If the items are out of compliance, they have to tell us what changes were made on the property that led to that non-compliance, and then they have to certify the work as the grading plan is still meeting the city's requirements and functioning as intended without any effect on the adjacent lots. We've been busy early part of this year. We put the form board surveys in effect on March 15th. Everything tells us that those are working as intended. We've had three meetings with the Home Builders Association so far. We just rolled out the grading and drainage plan and final lot drainage certificate, and we were holding a meeting with the engineers and surveyors pretty quickly, probably within a couple of weeks, to get their feedback and input on what that certification looks like. I'm already receiving some questions and email responses after sending it out. It was just sent out yesterday. Once we get the surveyors and PEs on board with the changes, then we will roll out a 30-day notification to the home builders. And additionally, we'll be holding some meetings with home builders and including one-on-one meetings if necessary to make sure and facilitate they understand what the changes are and what the intent is and what their obligations are gonna be under that new process. And then we'll wrap it up with some changes written into the technical manual, which you also had example of some of those changes in your packets. So that's what we've been working on, and we'll continue to push through and make that transition. There is a cost involved to everything that we do. It's been perceived, of course, by the home builders as negative. It's a lot of time and money, making the change and transition from surveying to engineers, preparing the lot grading and drainage plans on the front end, submitting those as an additional document and all the work that goes on to prepare those. And then on the tail end of the project, before certificate of documents is issued, the process of coming out and certifying the final lot grading and drainage. On the positive side, the plans of implementing these changes are intended to minimize construction errors. The form board surveys are doing that. The lot grading certifications should also do that. It also allows us, some of the changes with the staff alignment and so forth will help us in the two divisions function as one unit and should improve and maintain consistent service levels, both in terms of plan reviews and inspections, and that's succeeding well as well. So again, it also allows for engineering design, which is where it should be, and as well engineering solutions as it should be. And that's what we're pushing for. I think I probably should have done that earlier, and I could have got to go home a little bit, maybe. Good kid. That's it, that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Mr. Buckley. Bring it back to the dice. Anyone have any comments or anything for Mr. Buckley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for that. I think this is a good step forward to trying to ensure that the problems that the previous presentation was talking about, you know, do not continue and that we ensure that we're not affecting any other lots next to us. I had a couple of questions that, are we, is there gonna be an engineered drainage plan submitted as part of the application process?
Yes, it will no longer be a site survey or a site plan, it'll be a specific grading and drainage plan.
And there'll be a fixing there, seal to it and all that.
Yes, they will. We believe that that's necessary. If you're gonna ask an engineer to certify something on the back end, they're more likely going to want to be responsible for the design and not certifying somebody else's design. And a surveyor is basically just providing measurements.
Yeah, they're just measuring what's there.
They shouldn't be providing you a design. So that's the intent, is we get the engineer design and then the engineer to certify it.
Gotcha. So they'll design it, we'll have that map, you know, basically submitted with the application, they'll do the work, it should be like the plan, and it'll be surveyed, and then they'll certify as an engineer at the end to say all of this is as we designed it, basically.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So I'll just echo Councilman Miller's sentiment. Thank you for this. I think this is a wonderful step in the right direction. My only question was, are we going to incur increased costs? And if so, is there some way to be cost recovery on this?
The city or the builders?
The city. For any extra inspections or anything like that?
I believe we'll actually reduce the number of site inspections
Okay.
by deferring this work to the engineer and making them do the legwork and the site visits between the surveyors, coordinating the grading activities, all that sort of thing. Right now, the site inspectors are spending many hours on the lots and returning three and four and five times until they get the final grading correct. So we believe that over time, that their time spent will be pretty dramatically reduced.
Perfect, I love efficiency.
But it will, it will push some costs to the builders
It does.
because now they have to pay an engineer versus a surveyor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else down here?
Nothing.
Well, with that being said, we'll open it up for public comment. Does anyone have any public comments on this matter? Specifically for this one, CD. CD Rosell?
I put a fence in after they, you know, I had one of those houses, older houses were around my lot. And when I put the fence in, I saw the water was gonna do its thing and build up, so I put in a water garden and a French drain right behind it. When they do the permits for the fences, maybe that's when they should come in and look at that because fences make puddles big time.
Yes, sir. Was there a question in there, CD?
Yeah, the question was, should they do, when they do the permits?
As far as I know, we don't do permits for fences anymore, do we?
Yes.
Do we? I can't remember.
I had to submit a permit. Yep.
Yep.
I believe it's through an affidavit process. Ms. Barbara, fences?
No permits, we don't have permits.
Fence acknowledgement, I'm sorry. Ms. Barbara, can you come with Mr. Buckley, please? Ms. Barbara, can you come with Mr. Buckley, please, and answer any additional code-related questions?
I don't think we have.
So I thought they got it from me. When they put in my fence and it did stop the water from going out to.
Yeah, vinyl, vinyl fences will make the, the water.
So maybe that's a good time to check on that, that flow out.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager. We'll go ahead and put that information in the fence acknowledgement when they come in to get it. So they'll be aware of everything as you suggested to let them know things that like sheds and also the fencing. We'll do both the shed acknowledgement, the fence acknowledgement, and we probably can put something in on a shed, shed, right? Yes, so we, we'll educate and alert people to those things.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Any closing comments on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Thank you, Ms. Barbara. All right, we're going to move on to the, we're going to skip the item seven presentation, backyard chickens. I would assume that was, okay. Is that Ms. Barbara?
Yes. Mayor, City Council, per your request, you asked us to just come back with what was previously presented to the city council. And that is what Ms. Grossman and Ms. Smith are here to go through with you, which was the previous pilot program as designed.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Virginia, Ms. Barbara.
Good evening. Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager. Good evening, City Council. Mayor Barbara Grossman, you know, I'm here to, as a follow-up to the request on what was presented to City Council in 2023. In 2023, staff, staff met with stakeholders and made several changes to the proposal after meeting with the stakeholders. It was suggested to see the state, state, excuse me, stakeholders would be amicable to having community co-op proposals, but listening to the stakeholders, there was a desire for the stakeholders to participate in the community co-op chicken garden. Currently chickens are allowed in agricultural zoning districts. Here's an example of architectural zoning in the city of Palm Coast. The background to backyard chickens, although they are allowed in architectural zones, prior to June 2023, city council members were receiving multiple requests for background chickens in single-family resident zoning districts. On June 13th, 2023, at a workshop, council was presented with an overview to yard backyard chickens. The directive from city council was to present a pilot program for backyard chickens at a future workshop. In August of 2023, staff then presented a pilot program for backyard chickens to council. City council did not move forward with the pilot program. On March 11th, 2025, city council requested staff present presentations of the, to the city council at a future workshop where the following policies were also to be presented, backyard chickens, commercial vehicles and exterior residential colors. Staff reviewed 10 other county city ordinances and regulation on background chickens. The request for background chickens is not new. It's been around central Florida for at least 10 years. The city of Orlando conducted a pilot program into backyard chickens and it was successful. So the encouragement of their staff to participate as well. Once qualified, it went to, went to 100 permits allowed in certain districts with regulations. At that time, they had not reached the 100 permits and the employees are not included in the total of the 100 permits. Per the University of Florida study conducted, there are many benefits to having backyard chickens as well as the negative impacts. The university's research conducted on backyard chickens provided the following benefits: self-sufficiencies, sufficiencies, quality eggs, reduction of lawn pests, free from chemicals and pesticides, better tasting and healthier eggs, cost efficiencies, and more active lifestyle. Staff will have additional enforcement tools for compliance of existing violations as well as educational opportunities for all residents. Currently, background chickens are not allowed. Some risk, risk of the negative impacts from the University of Florida study are more predators in residential yards, more examples of raccoons, coyotes, snakes, et cetera. Conditions could be unhealthy and unsanitary or possible avian, avian flu or diseases. The public nuisance for the neighbors, rogue backyard chickens, wandering freely, domestic animals issuing barking, bites, killing chickens, and noise ordinances. The potential impacts for animal control for the additional officers, administrative staff and complaints and increases to the cost. In recent months, the avian flu has been circulating in high rates through the commercial farms. According to USDA article in June 2024, detections that the avian flu are higher in the fall and spring due to mitigation of the birds, suggesting that the practice, strong biosecurity, which means reducing opportunities for wildlife to spread the virus to the birds and prevent the spread of one of the premises to another. Staff reached out to multiple departments and the effects would mostly fall building and zoning and code enforcement divisions. There would be no effects on the quality of water nor the swales. For building zoning divisions, there would be an increase on permit and site plan reviews. For code enforcement, there would be an increase on code complaints, violations, attorney costs, hearing officer costs, and administrative staff costs. And here's where we had the 10 different locations and their chickens. Comparison results. Permits for those in single-family residential areas were seven out of 10. Architectural class and manicure class, manure, excuse me, manicure, God, it's late. Manure class, no roosters or male hens allowed for personal use only, no selling, fighting, slaughtering, or breeding allowed, must be contained in a coop and fenced enclosure screened from neighboring property, and no more than four chickens. Four out of the 10 required setbacks and have a lot size limit. Two out of the 10 do not allow chickens. One out of the 10 imposed a noise ordinance regulated no chickens in community gardens. One out of 10 requires a permit, has zoning and setbacks, and requires coops. Flagler Beach and Vero Beach consider backyard programs and both commissioners declined to allow. These are the current chicken and coops with the city of Palm, within the city of Palm Coast, which are still in violation of code. So please remember, some of these have been removed, some of them are still. We had a chicken there on, on 95 that animal control had to go out and get. Of course, we had roosters. And then here's some of the non-regulated, in violation chicken coops that are actually in the city of Palm Coast or, yes. There you can see that they even have the chickens right there by the trash cans that are in public view. They probably, hopefully they got written up for that, too. Then you can see on the front porch, there is a small coop that has no door on it and they're, they're left to be free roaming. And then, of course, you can see where they put the, the food out and there you have the chickens and they're, they're again free roaming. And this is a situation where they are, you know, shielding the chicken coop, but unfortunately we don't allow, they're prohibited right now to have slats in chain link fencing. A couple more, you know, coops that are out there. And of course, they're complaint driven. In 2023, the sample chicken coops that we had, catch up where I'm at. Okay.
These prices are from 2023.
Yes.
I just saw them out there the other day. I'm like, man, I'm paying, I'm paying that much for a chicken coop. That's a lot of money.
Yes, um, yes, we didn't get new prices, but this was back in 23 and these were some of the chicken coops that were acceptable. Look at, one on the left is meant to be a movable coop around the property, which the city would not recommend if it be removable because of course we're in hurricane, you know, areas and then it becomes a projectile. And the one to the right is a bit small for, for four chickens. These are two exempt of cost. Again, they've changed 300 to purchase online and would be recommended coops, but additional requirements around the coops would be necessary. The one to the right is very familiar, similar to the recommended by UF in their study. The one on the left may be over the height of the requirement and one to the right is more for rural areas. Both approximately cost $800, but I think when I was at there, I think they were over $1,000 when I was in there looking. The options, options, options suggested in 2023 to council, develop a pilot program, revise codes to allow backyard chickens for all residential zoning districts, or keep the code as is. The sources that were used was the University of Florida, the Muni code in multiple, multiple county and city ordinances, gardens in the front yards, chickens in the backyard and living lawn mowers, and a report on urban farming, newspaper blog articles, community gardening blog spot, and garden chickens. Proposed regulations for the pilot program criteria was a two-year program with a minimum, with a permit fee of $50 as set by resolution. The city is proposing the lowest of the fees of other cities, counties, staff's research. For example, Volusia County was at that time $134. Coop to be set up prior to the allowance of the chickens on property. Permits allows animal control access to the chickens for inspections once initially and then upon issues. Limited to 20 permits issued citywide. This was increased from 15 after we met with the stakeholders, but kept in the range so staff can easily manage without increasing staff. Let's see. The pilot program for the backyard chickens continued. Limited to homestead, single-family dwellings, occupied, no rentals, and not enforced, and not enforced with HOAs or with MPDs. Provide a letter to the neighbors stating participation in the chicken pilot program. Requires passage and certificates of two courses, care and raising of chickens through the agriculture extension, and a manure management. Requires a fly retardant bin to maneuver daily cleanup. Submit a site plan with the proposed setbacks. Okay. Additional requirements will be the size and setback specifications, not to exceed 100 square feet per single-family residential lot. Coop shall be located behind and in front, behind the front and side building facades of the principal structure and setback at least 10 feet from the rear property line and shall meet the interior setback requirements of zoning district. In no event shall the coop or any part thereof be permitted within the easement and a maximum height of eight feet. Again, no slaughtering, no fighting, no selling of chickens, eggs, or no selling of fertilizer. And eggs are for first, personal consumption only. At pilot program sunset date, option for good standing residents with existing permit and background chickens to retain the permit as non-conforming use and property until attrition. Life of a hen is approximately six to eight years. Non-conforming use permit remains at existing property, non-transferable until attrition. Test community interest and support. Understand public participation, engage support before broader code changes. Assesses compatibility and residential living. Evaluate impacts on noise, odor, and neighborhood character. Promote responsible chicken keeping. Encourage education, best practices, and compliance among participants. Identify regulatory best practices. Refine rules on the coop design, flock size, setbacks, and sanitation controls. Evaluate enforcement needs, determine the level of staffing and the resources needed for the effect on the oversight. Do you want to move forward on this pilot program?
Hold on, Ms. Barbara. Let's, let's bring it back to the dice. Any, vice mayor, you were here for that. Most of us were too, all the guys in the back that are here for the, so I'd look for you for your, you're the one that told them to bring it back up.
I did, and I appreciate council being willing to look at this again. So I just, for, for not only this presentation, but for the next two, the work vehicles and also the house colors, my mind just, you know, we're policymakers. So my idea is reasonable regulation without government overreach. So as we approach both this issue and the other two issues, I'm hoping that we can find some ground here where we're, we're regulating, we're, we're engaging in policymaking, but we're not engaging in, in government overreach. And so for me, when I look at the list of counties and cities that allow backyard chickens with obviously limitations and regulation, I don't understand why we wouldn't also allow backyard chickens. I'm fully in agreement with so many of the things that code has already presented, including the coop requirements, the manure bin requirements, obviously no roosters. So these are reasonable regulations in my mind, but that, that don't encroach on a homeowner's ability to have these, what I consider pets on their property. I also will say, and you know, I, I don't know about you all, but I know a lot of people that have chickens now. Okay? I didn't even know somebody on my street had chickens until the other day and I've lived there for over two years. So I don't think that the outrage that some, and I haven't heard any outrage, let me be very clear, but in the past, there's been some about the presence of chickens is really, I think it's a little overstated from some. I, I, I do feel that if we were to engage in some reasonable regulations, we could very easily allow people to have background, backyard chickens without encroaching on their neighbors' enjoyment of their own properties.
Councilman Miller?
Yes, sir. I, I just wanted to say, I, I agree. I think that with the right regulation of this, we mitigate some of the risks that cause people to not want this to happen. And so that's kind of a partnership with those that, that want to be able to raise chickens, that they have to abide by the rules and make sure that they're not becoming a nuisance or a burden on any of their neighbors in the same way we would expect everybody to behave, you know, in a neighborly fashion. So I agree that, you know, from a, a freedom standpoint, that I would lean heavily to not regulating something except for in the way to mitigate some of these conflicts that may occur in the future so that, so that we can just make it an easy and smooth transition.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gambira?
So as a, as a proud Florida 4-Her, I raised chickens when I was younger. It was actually a 4-H project in mind. And, and I've shared this with Nathan and his colleagues, you know, my concerns were around, you know, how many? No rooster and managing the manure because I used to get up every morning and hose that. We had a lot more than just four chickens. And so I'm encouraged that there's, there's a process in place by getting the class and things of that nature with the extension office. And we've got a great county extension director here, Laura, who's a family friend. So yeah, I think I support a pilot program wherever you guys want to take this, but we have to have some basic ground rules. And maybe, maybe we can get Nathan to, to, we add a position on code enforcement, somebody from the community to sit on code enforcement to help police their own. Would you be up for that, Nathan?
We actually made a second group for people to support each other, actually off of our kind of active group, we have another for owners to support each other, watch each other's chickens. All right. Support group.
Yeah. Chicken farmer support group. I think self-policing is important, right? And so, you know, I, I would, I would also offer that to, to give, you know, the code enforcement board some support if an issue comes up that has to be addressed. But yeah, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Sullivan?
I'm just listening here mostly, but the one question I always have, are there any limitations on the size of the property, minimum size of a property where this could be done?
Was that part of the?
It would be on all single-family residential lots. So they, they could vary in size. You know, corner lot is going to be more than a, an inside lot and you might have a pie shape, but it was just to have each residential lot to be able to have a coop and to be have, have a number of chickens, meet the setbacks and, and restrictions on heights and, and the size of the coop.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Which would determine where the, where it could go depending on the size of the property.
Was that all you had, Councilman? Yes. I think, I think at least three of us are in line with the same thing as far as freedoms and being able to do what you, you want to do on your own property. I would, I have no problem moving forward. I, I kind of thought the, the pilot program was a bit too restrictive when they first presented it back a year or so ago. I thought it was a bit restrictive. I would, I would want the coops not to be any taller than six feet because most standard feet, fence. because most standard fences are six feet. So I can't see your, you got two foot of chicken above where I can see it in my backyard. But I do feel that, you know, and I've supported... These guys know I supported them. In Florida, we have a lot of predators. And if you're willing to, you know, have hens and take care of them, because I find it funny, I walk my dog up on the north end, and I'll be coming back south towards my house, and I always hear this rooster behind me as I'm walking. And I just laugh because I'm like, oh, somebody's got a rooster. And then Ms. Gina Weiss, I went to take her campaign sign during the campaign, and she had a rooster living across the street from her. And we were joking around that the other day. She was laughing, yeah, I think he's gone now. But I'm wholeheartedly in support of, you know, as long as we can regulate it. But like I said, Florida has a lot of predators. I've already found, I've had a king snake and a black snake in my backyard already this season, and that's the first time I've seen a snake. So, but I'm fully in support of going forward with a pilot program. If we, with these guidelines, I would like to change the coop size no higher than six feet. I have no problem with that.
I'm with you. And I also, I don't know, I don't know that we need to send letters to the neighbors. I think that's too much. You can get a loud dog, and you don't have to let your neighbor know.
I agree, and I think it may create more conflict.
Correct.
Right. So we're good?
I.e., if they weren't even aware of the chickens for a couple of months, but they got the letter, and now they're keying on it.
Right.
That may cause a problem.
Noted.
Also, is there any objection if we are going to go the pilot program route to increasing the amount of permits and limiting this to one year? Two years is a long time.
I think so. How many is on there?
So, in terms of the permits, though, my understanding is that, I think it was presented, that the reason why we didn't go higher was because of cost. Essentially, if we haven't established a cost recovery amount for that permit amount, then we would have to have more code enforcement or devote code enforcement time to this from other things.
Well, we have, we have a $50 fee. I would rather see us do a little bit of a higher fee and be able to do more than 20 permits.
Absolutely, if we know the number that it would take to do this.
The return on investment for the person that wants to raise a chicken, you're gonna have to, that's a lot of eggs.
Oh, yeah, they're paying...
To get to a $100 fee, return on your investment, I think.
Well, I mean, a chicken coop is gonna cost you quite a amount of money.
Yeah, yeah.
My point is, I mean, I...
Not a cheap hobby.
I understand what you're saying about, you know, what is this going to ultimately cost? But I do want to see the two years go down to one. And I mean, I just think that, I don't think that 20 permits really is going to even give us a pulse on the situation of whether or not this works.
Well, I don't think, for me personally, really, and I think I said this back in the day too, I don't think we'll have more than 100 people in the whole city that decides to have chickens, unless we have some major chicken craze going on.
Which city was it that had the 100 permit?
Orlando.
It was Orlando.
Yes, it was all of Orlando, but that's the big encompass.
And they had not exceeded the 100?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you wanna, you wanna shift it to 50?
50, I think 50, and one year.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I just don't want to, you know, cost a bunch of money trying to figure it out.
Okay.
And let me just make for sure, as far as the permit, I mean, the fee, you wanted it raised up higher, or leave it?
I'd say leave it.
I'm okay with 50. I mean, we just don't know right now.
Okay, so we'll leave it at 50?
That's the difficulty.
One year and 50 permits.
But we can fill it out. It's just, you know, it is about individual freedoms. And I know we're gonna get pushback from it. I will, everybody on this council will get pushback from it. But it's a pilot program, just like the traffic calming device program, so...
So, Mayor, City Council, do you feel comfortable with me running this program administratively instead of bringing back an official resolution on the permit? That way, we can go ahead and get the application done and moving out instead of back to you with the resolution and all of those things?
I have no problem with that. Does anyone on the council have any problem with that?
Just, the $50 fee is a one-time fee. It's good for the year.
The year.
Yearly?
So then, we would schedule this to come back to you with the pros and cons of the pilot program, and then, then at that point, you would enact it via resolution as an official process, if you're comfortable with that.
And then maybe we add the position on code enforcement down the road.
Chicken Wrangler?
Well, that could be part of it, too. If you get your chickens out, your chickens are gonna be seized and rehomed or, you know, because they're gonna get out. I've never dealt with chickens too much, but I know they get out.
They do.
I want to excuse me for this, but I can't resist. You know, back in the depression days, there was a president who had a code. It was, I want a chicken in every pot. This will be a chicken in every lot.
There you go, a chicken in every lot. Even my family, we might try, but I have a German shepherd. He ain't gonna allow any chickens.
Yeah, I know. My cat will not be friendly to the chickens.
So we, and I can't even get a parrot. She won't even let me get a parrot. So are we straight? Is that the goddess we need?
Yes, Mayor, I have direction.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna open this public comment. So I think we're getting there, so let's go, guys. Who's got something to say? Are you satisfied? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sheila Hines, 30-year resident. I had chickens. I love chickens. I had three. They were no problem. Every morning, I'd go out and get these beautiful eggs. It was a wonderful thing. And then the coyote found them. 6:30, I went to feed them. 8:30, they were gone. They were in a pot somewhere. But I'm gonna get more chickens. And I bet you'd be surprised. There are probably hundreds of people in Palm Coast that have chickens, is my guess, okay? I do have a problem with the $50 fee. If I was buying a bird, you wouldn't charge me a $50 permit fee. So I do have a problem with that. I understand you're trying to regulate it and survey it. However, I'd like to propose that any senior that would like to be in the pilot program for chickens, there's no charge, just come on in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, everybody. My name is Christina Terossi and Mira. I live in the F section, and this over here is Julie. Honestly, I want to start by thanking you all for moving the presentations earlier. Thank you so much, because honestly, she's been good. But everyone has their limits. I'm afraid hers is coming up pretty soon. And I had a whole list of talking points to share with you. But honestly, I think the point I want to get across is that... Hello? Being a mom is hard. And I want to be able to have an opportunity to teach her skills that I see as valuable outside of academic, right? So farming, very basic farming, taking care of pets, including chickens, I see that as part of me giving her skills towards self-sufficiency. And we're not talking about like 20 chicken farm. We're talking like two or three chickens in the backyard. And I know, I hear the argument a lot, you know, that raising chickens is going to be more expensive than just buying eggs. And I know that anyone who has ever raised chickens can attest that is 100% true. So it's really not even about the cost. It's more, you know, the love of animals, the love of pets, and also, again, the idea of self-sufficiency and being able to use your property for something that you deem meaningful. And all of the, you know, what you proposed with the amount of chickens and the no roosters, I agree with that. So, anyway, at the end of the day, I think if there are other cities in Florida that have been able to successfully adopt this, I don't see any reason why. We can't do it in Palm Coast. So I'm hopeful that it goes forward, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Paulette.
Carol Stilton, Palm Coast, Florida. As a kid, I had banny chickens and banny roosters. I had rabbits, and I had ducks. And what that taught me in life was to just treat animals great. And this young lady wants those chickens for her child. The people in the back, they want them probably for the eggs. I feel if you build a fence and it costs $4,000, or you put up a shed and that might cost $10,000, there's no fees required. So you people want to charge $50. Seed costs a lot of money, bird seed, chicken feed, whatever. Guess what? I think you should reduce the fee to lower to no more than $25 because the expense for these people, for the enjoyment or for the eggs, is something that I think you people could sacrifice and lower the price of a permit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir? He beat you to it, Ms. Paulette. Yes, sir?
Josh Sadler, I live in the B section. A lot of the stuff that I was planning on hitting on already got hit on. One of the things that you were mentioning with the study at the University of Florida, they also mentioned in that study that proper maintenance of the coop greatly reduces any diseases.
Speak into the mic, please, sir.
Oh, sorry. That the same study that she had mentioned in the University of Florida also mentions that proper maintenance of the coops brings down any possibility of diseases. I also want to touch on the fact that the state of Maine actually included into their state constitution the protection of the right to produce your own food. This is a right that is afforded, should be afforded to everybody. I mean, we, as you guys said, we have other cities in Florida that allow chickens by depriving us of, it's depriving us of rights that are afforded to other Floridians and that are afforded to other Americans all over the country. It's not just like in your presentation up there, it's nationwide. I know we didn't hit on nationwide in here, but this is more than just a local issue, this is everywhere. And also, the stuff for all the chickens, the chickens themselves being sold in the stores, that kind of hits on due process stuff, where I looked into the owning chickens before I went and got everything and spent all this money and whatever. And as I was holding code enforcement during a hearing there, we call them farm animals. Well, I didn't look up farm animals, I looked up chickens. I am not a lawyer, I'm a mechanic. I mean, by selling this stuff in the city and telling us we can't have, that violates the due process. We don't have the ability to go and look this stuff up if we're calling them by things other than their name. Kind of jumping around in my thinking, because like I said, we hit a bunch of it. I mean, we made more progress here than Nathan than I thought we were going to on this issue. Kind of caught me off guard here. I mean, I guess that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Got it. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Ashley Durasio, B section. I stand before you today not only as a resident of Palm Coast, but as a devoted parent, deeply committed to the well-being of my children and the harmony of our community. I come to you with a heartfelt plea to recognize that our family's chickens are not farm animals, but beloved pets that play an essential and irreplaceable role in our children's emotional and physical health. My son has faced emotional challenges stemming from bullying at school. These struggles, as any parent can imagine, are painful to witness and difficult to remedy. But amid this adversity, something extraordinary happened. He found comfort and stability in an unlikely friend, his chicken. These hens have become his safe space. Their presence calms him after a difficult day. Feeding them, watching them, and simply being their companion helps ground him and bring peace to his heart. They are quite literally therapy with feathers. Both of our children have severe allergies to traditional pets like cats and dogs. Chickens, however, do not trigger their symptoms. This has made it possible for our children to experience the nurturing companionship of a pet without the risk of medical reaction. These birds have provided a connection that would otherwise have been denied to them. We take immense pride in maintaining a clean, odor-free, and quiet space for our hens. Their coop is cleaned daily and are kept safely enclosed. They are never a nuisance. In fact, our neighbors have written letters of support to animal control affirming that our chickens are not only well-maintenance but bring no disturbance to our street. Their support reinforces that these animals do not negatively impact our neighborhood, they enrich it. We do not breed or sell our chickens or their eggs. They are not a source of income or commercial venture. They are our children's companions. While the Palm Coast ordinance refers vaguely to livestock or farm animals, it does not provide a precise definition, leaving space for interpretation. We believe our chickens, under their current use and care, fall under the spirit of pet ownership and not farming. There is ample scientific evidence to show the benefits of pet ownership for children's development and emotional well-being. The NIH reports that children with pets experience lower stress and better emotional regulation. A study published in the Journal of Pediatrics found that children with pet exposure exhibit fewer social emotional problems and have improved self-esteem. These benefits are not limited to just cats and dogs. Emotional connection and therapeutic value extends to chickens as well, as demonstrated by families like ours. Several U.S. courts have examined whether chickens can be considered pets in Doctry versus HOA of New York Court of, sorry, North Carolina Court of Appeals. The court evaluated the distinction between livestock and pets, ultimately acknowledging the emotional connection owners have with their chickens. Additionally, there have been legal cases where residents successfully defended their right to keep chickens as emotional support animals, citing constitutional precautions related to property rights and emotional well-being. Council members, our hens have never just been chickens. They are not livestock, they are not a business. They are therapy, they are loved, and they are the lifelessness of our children. Please consider the intent and context of our care and recognize that our hens, as they are truly family. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I also printed out, like, common concerns and researched, like, concerns and responses, if you guys would all like a copy of these?
You can, you can give it to the clerk. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
Cool. So Josh Fabian from the F section. Obviously, there's a lot of pro-chicken stuff said, so that's, I'm in favor of that. My main concern, and like other of you up there had said, is that the pilot program is too restrictive. I think that the limit of the amount of houses and the amount of hens is a bit too much. Obviously, you should have a coop, and they should be fenced in and not running around and doing all those. All those things make sense, and I would hope that anyone who wanted chickens would just do those things naturally. But my concern with the number of chickens is set to four. If you have a family with a lot of people and you were trying to supply yourself with eggs, four chickens wouldn't do that if you wanted to eat eggs every day because a chicken doesn't lay it. Depending on, there's lots of, based on breed and stuff, but like the ones that lay the most will lay like five eggs a week. And so if you only had four chickens, you'd be getting two to three eggs a day. Just, so if that is the goal, is for that, that I think four would be too low of a number to where then with the cost of getting a chicken coop, and I think most smaller chicken coops are built for six chickens. So if you're spending that amount of money on a chicken coop and all of that, and then you're only utilizing half of it, the cost benefit analysis isn't worth as much. But I do think it just comes down to property rights and, like was said previously, that you have a right to produce and make your own food. We're not saying that people can't have a garden in their backyard. So you shouldn't be able to say you can't do another thing to produce food. And so there's a, it's, so I think the rules should just be Uh, and so there's a, it's, it's, uh, so I think the, the rules should just be the chickens being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep their and breed chickens shall not be infringed. The chickens are, are, are constitutional right as Americans, that it's our property. If we want to raise chickens, we can raise chickens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Paulette.
Paulette Hatfield in the fifth, um, F section. Um, for the nineteen sixty, seventies, eighties, and nineties, I was a dozen at the Houston Zoo. One of the animals that I would take out on outreach programs to the schools was a Dominique chicken who ran the roost. Um, the thing that was the most concerned with is the fact that in Houston, we would have hurricanes, and so wind was a big deal, and she would never come out of her coop that was outside. She would, didn't want to be trapped inside the building where it was secure and everything. So I think it's important, um, on the coops, if you have, um, a shed, you have to get a permit if it's over a certain size. Um, and I think it needs to be hurricane-safe because we're going into the storm time. So I think that's something that it has to be considered, that it, it needs to not just be able to fly away, literally. Um, I like the point that it is a homestead, a home where the house would be, where the chickens would stay. And the thing that I'm concerned with is last week, you all selected, um, I think it was two, you approved two hundred and fifty-seven homes in fifty-foot lots, as opposed to the ITT homes that have eighty lots, eighty-feet lots. Um, you could have some concern as far as your ten-foot, um, borders and everything else, so that's something that you might want to be concerned about. Also, the vet at the zoo was checking the chickens all the time because there were different issues with them pecking on each other and losing feathers and things like that. So I think you have to have, um, investigate whether or not we have veterinarians here in Palm Coast that can handle chickens. So I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast. Uh, I, I'm a little confused at the result of the presentation, because I thought we were pushing for legalization and to bypass the pilot program based on a couple different emails that I've had. Um, I think everyone here is acknowledging that there's already more than twenty coops here in town, and, um, I think, if you put a price on it, people just aren't gonna actually register anyways. You're gonna, you're gonna have people that know that their neighbors know that they're, that chickens are allowed in town and they're not going to register. I'm not even condoning them doing that, that's just the reality of the situation, and my understanding was that we were working to bypass the pilot program. Um, and so I, with it becoming shorter, but still having a price and still being limited, we have a Facebook group with three hundred members in there. Uh, if you tell us, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm not saying I would break it, but if you say that twenty people can get it all, however many homes are part of the three hundred members, we'll say at least a hundred, they're, they're gonna get it. I, like I said, I'm not condoning it. Apparently, I'm gonna be the police, is my understanding, offered to me, I have a job offer on the table to be the chicken police, in writing. I, I think, or at least verbal agreement, handshake, spit. Um, and, so I, I don't know why we got to here, based on conversations I've had leading into this week, that we are still trying to go with the restrictive pilot program, which kind of was a byproduct of the last legislative session that balked out it anyways, I think. Uh, that came from Nick Clufus, who said, "Well, I'm not gonna prove it because I don't want a headline." The next day, there was a headline that he chickened out. So this, the whole pilot program thing was a way to not even actually pass it, so I think we're better off pushing for legalization and with, uh, four or five, whatever number we want to throw on, I think legalization is gonna have the same result. Um, and people aren't, they're not gonna want to write a letter and pay fifty dollars and show up to a class, so I think more encouraging, kind of as you said, a healthy, supportive community, which I have been working towards. We've got a two, three-year-old Facebook group that we've messaged people in and then keeping the loop to try to make this a good town, but there's, it doesn't make sense, like, from a workability standpoint, because people are just gonna circumvent the program. We all, we all know, none of us are ten, we know how people are, so I think, sorry, that is, that's my medicine form. Um, I, I'd like to revisit the topic immediately and, uh, see what the field is for just, um, legalizing chickens here in town. I think someone else said, there's, somewhere, there's gonna be a cost-free chicken ownership. Not even coming from me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Well, then, that's, that's all the comments for this, is just chickens, so.
Yes, no, I, I am, but we have to pay for our dogs.
Can you state your name for the record?
Mindy Melendez. Um, you have to pay for your dog's license, so a chicken, if you're gonna have it as a pet, you would have to do the same thing. I take my dog, and if you don't have the rabies shot, they send you a little thing in the mail and tell you to pay. So I think it's, you know, people have chickens, it's just like a pet, that's just my thought.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. Don't shoot the messenger. I'm getting texts from people that are watching. I, for one, could care less about chickens or not, but the overwhelming conversation I'm getting, are chickens illegal in Palm Coast presently?
Only in aqua, oh, agricultural zoning, they are allowed.
So in the city of Palm Coast, they're considered farm animals? Bad description. And they are not allowed. I've been hearing this forever. Yet I'm hearing, over and over again, there's chickens in Palm Coast. So the questions that I'm getting from the citizens are, what's the value of enforcement? What's the value of what we're doing now? We're trying to set a policy to clarify and control a system, a situation, a process that already exists? I didn't even know there were chickens. Mayor, you didn't know there were chickens. Why are we wasting all this time and energy trying to control process, gather money, organize, clarify something that already exists? It's already there. Clarify it to allow chickens to be in the city or get rid of them completely. It's a very simple decision. I'm for chickens. Let them be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comments? We'll bring it back to the dais. So we're getting consensus to move forward with the pilot program as, as we just made the changes.
So I, I will say, so, um, I, I had, I had conversations, um, with, uh, Mr. Phelps, and I am in favor of skipping the pilot program, but in my discussions with staff and because we can't talk, obviously, beyond this dais, um, feeling out from my colleagues, I feel like you all are leaning towards the, the pilot program, but I will be very clear, I'm in favor of skipping the pilot program and just changing the code to allow, um, chickens to not be defined as farm animals. Um, but, but, but let me also be clear, though, that if we were to amend the code and allow chickens, I would still say that a lot of these requirements have to remain in place. So it's not as if bypassing the pilot program is going to bypass these regulations. Um, I, I, I think that if we were to move forward with an amendment to the ordinance, we would take chickens out of the definition of farm animal, but then add in a portion that says you can have them, but this is, these are the requirements, whether that's an ordinance or resolution, however that, whatever that looks like to the attorney, would be, it would be via ordinance, okay? Um, that we add a lot of these things in the ordinance. I would say, if, if council does want to stick with the pilot program, I, I would ask that staff notify us if we get to that fifty, uh, permit threshold, um, because if there is such a demand that we get to a fifty permit threshold, you know, I, I think it, we should consider expanding that. Um, but to the extent there's appetite up here to skip the pilot program, I'm okay with that. I just, in, in talking to staff and, and feeling out council, you know, I'm trying to get consensus and, and get us moving in the right direction, so.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Vice Mayor. I, I'm, going to pilot program was in a spirit of cooperation.
Correct.
For me, but I don't feel we need it. I, I think it, you know, like I said, I don't think we would have, maybe it'd be more than a hundred people, but I, I doubt it, and I'm sure it would peter out after a while, uh, but I have no problem if we just want to codify it into ordinance, remove it. I don't think I like the whole sites, the site plan or anything, other than a basic layout saying where the coop's gonna be located, that's all that would be. Barbara?
Yes, you could, you, well, most of us have a site plan, and you put a, a little box where your coop's gonna be, and you put your setbacks on it as to what it's gonna be, and you're gonna submit your coop to be able to see what it looks like, and, and of course, the placement, and the ten-foot from the rear property line was to also keep a nuisance away from the maneuver.
Correct.
I get it, I get it. So do we have consensus on the, on the council to just, Marcus, what you gonna say?
So just, just thinking, you know, logistics here, uh, so I'm gonna use the example of the short-term rental ordinance. That took some, quite some time to get passed.
Yes.
It may not be a bad idea to first move with this, uh, what's the plan, Barbara?
Pilot.
Pilot program first and test it, and then while that's going on, we can look at drafting an ordinance. Uh, I'm just saying, like, if you go straight to an ordinance, you're looking at maybe a month, two months before you guys can finally adopt and pass, at the earliest.
Well, and that, yeah, I was gonna say, that's if we all agree on all the terms of the ordinance the first time around, because we have to do two reads, correct?
Yes, two reads.
Yeah, so why don't, what if we do a six-month pilot program while we're drafting the ordinance? We can always shorten it, if the ordinance is good to go, this council is the policy making body.
We can increase the numbers if we hit the cap.
Correct, yeah. And, and we can say, okay, now we at least have something in place, so they're not waiting, and if we decide, you know, it's going well for the first two months, however long it takes to get back to us, then we move forward.
I think an important part of this, too, is, is what I mentioned before, and, and having those requirements for certain things to make it healthy and safe, um, and not a burden on neighbors and things like that. So unfortunately, that does add cost to code. So knowing, having six months to kind of collect that data and know what cost recovery looks like in terms of the fee. Um, also mentioned before, you know, certain tiered structures for seniors, veterans, whatever, um, you know, I'd be in favor of that, too.
You know, too, uh, and I understand we have a group here that is in favor of them, and actually, a lot of people here that are in favor of them, but there's a lot of people who aren't. And, and they may have some suggestions, and we have to think of everybody, we have to think of both sides of this, so during this period, while Marcus, you're working on the ordinance, others may come forward and say, you know, hey, I'm in favor of this, or I've had this issue or whatever, so that we can make sure we're, we're hearing from enough residents during this period as well.
Yes, Councilman Sullivan.
Uh, I, I thought that our, uh, city manager made a suggestion of working out for the pilot program to work out some rules and regulations that we would then approve at our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are we not gonna do that?
No, it's just administratively what we already have in the pilot program suggestion with the changes we just made to include shortening the pilot program down to six months.
So what are we doing on the pilot program tonight?
She's got, the, the city manager is gonna implement the pilot program with, with the changes we just made, and then we're gonna work with Marcus to codify an ordinance. Uh, but the pilot program is gonna only last six months, correct?
Well, yeah, while the ordinance is being drafted, and I would ask, too, that staff do a press release, maybe, or some type of notice notification to actually let people know what this pilot program actually looks like, because we have tinkered with it quite a bit, we want to make sure that there's clear communication to the residents as to what is now permitted in the city.
I, I'd rather see it, the pilot program last for a year, because it's hard to do anything in the government in six months, but, uh, but, uh, so that, I mean, that would be my thought.
Do we have consensus with shortening to six months?
I'm good with six months.
All right, all right, compromise.
All right. All right.
Okay, city manager, Barbara, do you, and Virginia, do you have your guidance? Are you good to go?
Yes, I'm good.
All right, you're good, Bar, Barbara?
Yes, I'm just verifying we still have a fee.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the fee remains.
Okay, and we changed it to fifty, um, permits and six-month period.
Yes, and the coop, no harden, six feet.
Yes, I got that. And no letters to the neighbors.
No letters.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you ladies so much.
And thank you to you guys, that you've been coming relentlessly, you've always been very respectful. Thank you for your efforts, thank you for being advocates for this.
Okay, uh, with that being said, we're gonna move on to item five E, or E five, uh, commercial vehicles. This is gonna be a humdinger.
Who's presenting?
Barbara.
Barbara, you're staying?
Well.
She's got two more, right?
Yeah.
It's been a long day.
Mayor, City Council, this is, um, per your request to re-look at the allowance of commercial, parking commercial vehicles in our residential neighborhoods. Um, I will tell you that, uh, this was previously reviewed by former city council, um, where we did do a survey, and the community was quite split on its application, but we're here to provide you with what's allowed in the code and take your direction. Go ahead, Ms. Barbara.
Thank you, city manager.
Good evening, Council. Barbara Brosman, Co-Enforcement Manager, here to present on commercial vehicles. Tonight, I'll be discussing the history of the commercial vehicles in the city's Code of Ordinance, definition of what a code of commercial vehicle constitutes, and is always, and is always available for, um, questions. The, the commercial vehicle code was adopted and incorporation of the city in nineteen ninety-nine. In July two thousand and ten, council discussed amending the code. At the time, council opted to allow commercial vehicles to be parked at residential, uh, houses during lunch as a policy for staff. In April twenty twenty-one, under the SAP procedures, council had it as a priority to review the code. In May twenty twenty-one, there was a simple, non-scientific survey completed. The results were forty-nine in favor of keeping the code as it, as it is, and forty-nine percent agreeing to change the code to incorporate the allowance of one commercial vehicle as a resident, residential house. Both state statute and city code of ordinances provides a definition of what a commercial vehicle constitutes. The city's code is a broader definition, but incorporates the state statute in the Section three twenty point oh one twenty-five Florida statutes is where you'll find the lengthy definition of commercial vehicles.
So just to understand, Palm Coast code is broader than state, but it references state within, so.
Yes.
Are we using both to restrict?
It'll refer to three twenty oh one, but we use our code of ordinances as far as forty-four thirty-four will, and will tell you what a commercial, uh, vehicle's defined as. Just as like we have animal control, we use state statutes for dangerous dogs, for animal cruelty, uh, so it's referenced.
Okay, so we're referencing specific portions of it?
Um, I would, I would add, I worked for the Florida Department of Transit, Transportation, uh, for three years, and really what we're dealing here with, dealing with here is not commercial, uh, commercial vehicles, because there's already laws for that. It's already, truck, trailer, semi, uh, combination, twenty-six thousand and one and above, you know, rated for the road, if you're hauling a trailer, some dooleys, dooleys that are, uses hot shots or car haulers, uh, they're usually registered for twenty-six thousand and one because they're operating under that umbrella, umbrella as a commercial motor vehicle. So I think personally, what we're dealing with here is signage, because most vehicles within the city that we say are commercial vehicles, say Mike Morello's, um, Mike Morello's van, it, it may have a DOT number on it, but it's not legally, legally defined as a truck, trailer, semi, truck combination of twenty-six thousand and one pounds. So what we're dealing with here basically is signage and advertising on vehicles within the community.
I, I would agree with that assessment, that that is my intent to address that, rather than try to regulate commercial vehicles or any of that.
Yeah, I've been referring to this as work vehicles, not commercial vehicles.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Barbara, you can continue on.
Okay, so this is a slide, and the next are allowed under the current code. Okay, there's, uh, a van with signage, and it meets the three square foot per side. You have, um, and the signage is under the three square foot. Allowed under the current ordinance, signage is under three square feet. Prohibited are these examples: vans with racks, equipment, or materials in signage in excess of three square feet. Now, I know that city council made policy to leave the rack up, but they would have to remove the apparatus off of the van, such as the ladders and things, and any apparatus, poles, whatever they might have up there, so, but they left the ladder racks up there so that they could always put them back up there the next day. Also prohibited are signage in excess of three square foot, such as a fully wrapped vehicle. Uh, we've had situations where you have, you know, realtors that have the complete car wrapped, uh, Roto-Rooter complete wrap, uh, so that exceeds the three square feet. These type of vehicles are also prohibited by definition, and as you can see up there, you've got a flatbed truck with apparatus in the back, you know, with a, a wench on it. You've got a box truck, uh, on the other side. These box trucks are also prohibited by definition, definition. Um, one you can see.
By definite, go back to those, please, Barbara. So those two trucks, that box truck on the left would probably be rated over twenty-six thousand pounds, and the one on the right, uh, may not, because that looks like an actual, at one time, it was an emergency response vehicle, but I don't think it would be rated over twenty-six thousand and one pounds.
Correct. Again, it's definition of the, um, of the, uh, ordinance at forty-four thirty-four, what defines a commercial vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
Here are some working-type, uh, commercial vehicles, again prohibited in, um, in, by the definition. So now you have a dump truck, and you have a, a, a transport van. Here you see heavy dump truck and a, and a Mack truck. Um, again, this, this is all in Palm Coast, this is in the front yard, the other one is off to the right-of-way. Now, we do have, uh, where, you know, rigs will come home, they have to unload and reload, and they call and let the city know that they're there, so if we do get, you know, a complaint, we can explain to them that they're there for a reason. This is samples of closed utility trailers, which are prohibited per, per the code. More utility trailers and open utility, utility trailers are prohibited as well, so one is a box and one is open. Then we have the tractors that like to occasionally come home, and commercial limousines, both prohibited. These violate- These violations are handled by the co-enforcement board, so all of these go before the board. And as a note, in the year 24, 1023 through 924, 1,072 complaints came in on commercial vehicles.
That was probably one of them.
And FY '25 to present, 888. Of those commercial vehicles, there were 149 cases from 10123 to 93024. 149 cases were on the docket for code board. Two of them were continued, 28 were withdrawn, and 119 cases were heard. On 102124 to present, there's been 100 cases on the docket, one continued, 19 withdrawn, and 80 cases heard. Just to give you some statistics.
At the end of the presentation?
Yes, I've got one more to go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Barbara. Okay, bring it back to the dais for discussion. What's our, what is our intent here? What are we seeking to do? Make it more lenient on, see, I have one young lady that called me, she used to be my neighbor, and she said that her boyfriend would bring his van home to check on their dog or something and park it in the swell, and by the time he walked in the house, checked on the dog, and came back out after lunch, he had a ticket on his van for parking in the swell.
Parking in the swell?
But just, just for, you know, just to walk in and check on his, and I said, tell him not to park in the swell, just park in the street, turn your four-way flash or something. So what is our intent with reviewing this commercial motor vehicle ordinance?
For me, Mayor, my intent is to be more business-friendly, and I think it can be accomplished pretty easily. I mean, if you look at our ordinance, where it says any, it defines a commercial vehicle, amongst other things, as any motor vehicle upon which advertising markings have been affixed, which occupy in excess of three square feet per side. I think if you strike that, you don't allow any of the other larger vehicles, but you do allow regular work vehicles that have decals on them, so that folks don't have to either put those hideous covers on their vehicles, or cover their cars in magnets. You know, you think about the AC worker who is on call, or, I mean, for, my dad owns a pest control company, he gets called out to remove, you know, rats from rat traps out of attics on Sundays at 11 o'clock at night, and, you know, he has a work vehicle. So in the neighborhood that he lives in, he has to go and take all these bags or magnets or whatever off at 11 o'clock at night to go get somebody's rat out of their attic. And I can tell you, when they want a rat out of their attic, they want it out now. When you want your AC on, you want it on now. So I just think in order to be more business-friendly and to come up with a reasonable regulation that's not going to allow all of these other vehicles, by striking that one portion of our ordinance, we accomplish that.
So I agree with that, and then I'd also like to bring up the part that talks about ladders and things like that, right? So if you're an electrician, or a tradesman, or something like that, you pull in and you've got to unload nine things, and then you get the call to go back out there, now you've got to load them back up. Does that, does that change anything for anybody? The ladder being on top of the truck? If there's a work truck allowed in the driveway now because of our changes, does, is there any appreciable difference for a work truck with a ladder versus just a work truck?
I have, I have no problem with it, because I had, I had, STX was my old, my old F-150, and it was a short bed, but I had a ladder rack, and I would, you know, painter, you use ladders. But I would come home, and I had my magnets on my door, but every night I would back into my driveway, I'd download my ladders on the side of my house, and I'd take my magnets off. So if, if the, for me, if the ladder is within the confines of the dimensions of the truck, I had no, I had no problem with it personally, but that's only one.
I think some of it specifically talks about, like, the racks being, you know, above the cab, essentially.
That's what I was going to ask, because, I mean, if you go to the ordinance, what part of the ordinance are we talking about? And to me, what you're referring, and I could be wrong, but what you're referring to is any motor vehicle to which has been added a platform rack or other similar apparatus designed for carrying property or cargo, excluding a standard luggage rack? Because there's no reference to a specific ladder.
So I think in the presentation, the functional effect of this is, we're allowing the rack, but we're asking them to remove the ladder nightly, because they can't remove the rack every single day and put a rack back on and bolt that on. So functionally, as kind of a service to say, hey, this is, this code is a little bit restrictive, but the intent was to make sure you don't have a ladder, we're allowing you to just remove the ladder to meet the code. So the question is, is should we continue to restrict ladders and things like that that are attached, affixed to a work vehicle, or should we allow that?
Yeah, we had a, down the way from my house, like, I did that with mine, but the guy stopped one day, and he said, Mike, has the city ever given you any issues? I said, no, I take my ladders off my rack every night. But he had an AT&amp;T repair van, and he had ladders on top, and he would keep getting cited for, just for having the ladder on the van.
What about pipes, wood? I'm just thinking other equipment.
Yeah.
Right, we gotta draw the line somewhere, yeah.
I would just say, allow the ladders, no, nothing other than that, because that's a functioning part of the crew of the truck, so.
But we're also changing the, doing away with the three square foot on the side.
Yeah, that, so it's got several different definitions of commercial, one of which is anything with more than three feet.
What about a totally wrapped van?
Well, if we eliminate that, as the vice mayor suggested, then a full wrap would be not a commercial vehicle, according to this.
You know, I personally.
There are fully wrapped vehicles in Palm Coast, I see them.
Yes.
I don't report them or anything, but there are.
We had that one truck, the Mosquito Authority, it's a white pickup truck with pink writing on it that's up in the L-section. That guy parks in his driveway all the time, I don't know if he's ever been cited.
Mr. Newlin has a camouflage Camaro, I think, in kind of your neighborhood, up in the L-section somewhere, but.
So I, that, my personal opinion doesn't matter, but, you know, I have no problem with that, as long as it's not offensive or obscene language on the wrap. You know, most of these, you would not believe the amount of money that the average working-class family that's a service industry is going to save in storage of their vehicle.
Yeah, absolutely, the travel time going to a storage unit, parking lot.
Three or $400 a month for storing your truck just because you can't park it in your driveway is ridiculous to me. Yes, yes, sir?
Yeah, I just, just want to be clear, so the other prohibited vehicles, like the larger ones, over 26,000 pounds, we're saying that's still.
Still the same, that's the standard state definition of a truck, truck, trailer, semi-trailer, truck tractor semi, I can't remember, truck tractor semi-trailer combination, that's, that's in Florida statute. 26,000, and that too, that would include duallys that are rated for that also, because they're rated like that, because they're hauling, they're car haul, car haul, car haulers. But you can't have a dually that's rated less than 26,000 and less, but your intent is to not use that vehicle in such a way as a commercial motor vehicle.
Okay, what about trailers? The box trailers?
Yeah, that one, I don't know.
And then we, I go back to the short-term rental discussion about boat trailers, right? I mean, what do we do with that?
That one, I don't know, it's tough for me, because I could go either way on this. You know, we do have a large industry for lawn maintenance in Palm Coast, right? So it does affect a lot of people. So if the intent is to help small business, understand, right? But then also, it's, you know, does a driveway end up with four trailers in the driveway that have not moved in a year and things like that? So I'm, I'm not sure.
The problem with the trailer is trying to get a truck and a trailer, while connected, in the actual configuration into a driveway is not going to happen.
You're going to see a lot of road parking.
Yes, so I would say no on the trailers, but regular standard vehicles. Like, my neighbor, Emily, was the one that brought this up, that got to get this going, and I looked up her truck earlier. They have a, when she said, my van, our personal van for our kids and my husband's van is the same dimensions, and this is a Transit XLT 350, it's, the length is 18.32 feet, the height is 6.8, so it's seven feet tall, and the width is 8.2 feet. That's a, that's like one of the larger, standard-sized vans you see out there. And they had those two vans, and I posted them on social media, those two vans sitting side by side in the driveway. One was a regular van, the other was an overhead door company, and he had to put the big circus tent over it, and I don't think we need to do stuff like that, so.
Limousines?
No.
No.
All right, I'm just, I want to make sure.
Oh, no, no, they're long.
What about those John Deere's, though?
You got to move it, Ty, you got to move it.
No, I honestly think, so, I mean, when we're looking, again, looking at the ordinance, I think if you get rid of the section that says something in excess of.
Three square feet.
Three square feet, and then if we're going to allow the ladders, there'd be something worked in that says that ladders are permitted as long as they don't exceed, what, the length of the vehicle, that's what we're saying.
Stay within the.
The overall length of the vehicle.
The overall length of the vehicle as standard.
Which I think should be fine anyways, right? You can't drive around with a ladder sticking off the front and the back of your vehicle.
You can put the front.
I know they do, but, listen, you can't do a lot of things that people do, so.
So just, you know, being the city attorney here and being at those code enforcement hearings, Barbara, would you say that there's still more violations that aren't ladders, that there's other stuff that's on there that gets brought to code?
Yes.
Can you explain that to council a little bit, so they're taking that under consideration? What'd be other things on the racks that you make currently under the code that would have to be removed to be, not be in violation?
Any type of, you know, covert pipes, plumbing pipes.
Yep.
There's quite a variety of things, so anything that's in their realm of.
So do we want to make this more generic to be inclusive of those things?
So I was going to maybe.
Specifically saying ladders?
Make a recommendation, maybe just taking out the platform rack altogether, that might be an easier suggestion. Don't have to do it, but just saying that, or we can, we can try to work around with that.
Vice mayor, what's your concern that people are going to put on racks besides things that are appropriate for a business?
Well, I think you get into a very subjective decision-making exercise at that point. So you either have to allow, either take the platform rack exclusion off and just allow anything that people are putting on their vehicles, or be very specific, just ladders.
I'm just trying to envision what they could possibly put up there that we would have a problem with. I mean, I'm sure somebody will test it and find out, but, and we'll find out, but from a realistic standpoint, like, what things have we seen that we would say that's not appropriate for the top of a vehicle versus a ladder?
Well, some, some people, you'll see them with racks, specifically plumbers, they'll have PVC pipe that's like 16, 18 feet long hanging off the other end. I would say if it stays, as long as, just a ladder that stays within the dimensions of the truck, overall length. And some of the vans, like AT&amp;T, they have these tubes on the side that are mounted, and they're neat, they're neat, but they're tubes that they slide piping and stuff in that they cap off.
Yeah.
And you'll see those, but as long as, for me, as long as it stays within the dimensions of the truck, other than height, because it would be on the top of the truck or the van.
We could, you know, I can work with Ms. Grossman and her team and make exceptions, like, make a list of exceptions, something like that, and bring that, if it goes the route, I think it's going to, I can bring those exceptions to you guys.
Part of my goal here, too, is to free up code, right? To not be chasing down stuff that doesn't need to, so I don't want them now spending all their time on plumbers' pipes on the top of vans and stuff like that.
It's just, it's like, like the vice mayor said, well, I think Mr. Miller said, we need to be more friendly to small business owners, because they are the backbone of our community. Any further discussion?
So it sounds like, sorry, you.
What you got there, Mr. Delorenzo?
I just want to point out, Jason Delorenzo, chief staff. Mayor, City Council, when, if you remove the advertising or allow advertising, code enforcement will not be allowed by the Supreme Court ruling to read that and take any action on that. I just want to remind you about that, okay? So if a neighbor has an issue with a certain political party, or their neighbor themselves, they could plaster that on their vehicle, and we will not be able to do anything about that, because, right, wording will now be allowed on vehicles, so just.
Which is the case now, if they stay within the three feet, right?
Uh, yeah, yep, just want to make, make sure.
I get that, as it gets bigger, it gets a little bit more abrasive.
For all the information, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Jason.
And we'd also have to make sure it's in there that's in good working order, you know, not a hunk of junk.
Well, that's subjective, that's very hard for us to.
Well, I think we have a code now, you can't, your vehicle can't be unoperational or.
Able to run, right?
Yeah. We have that in code now, don't we?
Yes, inoperable vehicle.
There you go, so, yeah.
And also, with the changes, it'll free up code, because you don't, you can't enforce everything, you know, it's a call-based, it's a complaint-based system that we have right now, Barbara, right?
That's correct, by the, by state statute, yes.
Someone calls and complains, you know, it frees up code not having to police up all those things, because Bob is mad at his friend Ted that lives across the way, you know, calling city code on him every other day, which we have that problem on Luther that I sent you guys the other day.
His house is on contract.
Yeah.
So just so that I'm hearing you correctly, is that you would like for the city attorney to revise a draft of the commercial vehicle ordinance for a future agenda, and consider the request that you've talked about, talked about tonight, being allowances of the racks and signage and all of those other things.
And I will say this before we open up the public comments, and I've said this for a while now, Palm Coast is not an HOA. You know, we have, we have codes, but we are not an HOA. If you want to dictate what, that I can't paint my house a certain color yellow, or, you know, maybe you should live in an HOA and get that extra burden that comes along with it, but even, I think even the state reevaluated commercial vehicles in HOAs, if I'm correct, right?
Yes, with pickup trucks.
They said they can't do that, so.
Up to 26,000 pounds can sit in your driveway.
Yes, yes, ma'am. You sound like you're on microphone, how did you do that? We got any more comments from the dais?
No, what I'll just, what I'll just say, you know, with regards to that comment, Mayor, and I think we're making a good decision here, people still did move to Palm Coast because there is still some reasonable regulation as well. So I think that this is still in keeping with that. So again, I mean, I, you know, I'd like to see the draft of the ordinance, obviously, to make sure that we're not, you know, we're contemplating what could be stacked up, you know, to your point, Councilman Miller, to make sure that, you know, we are still keeping in, this is still residential, we still need to be reasonable, we still need to make sure we're keeping things clean and can regulate and not get into subjective territory.
Yes, yes, ma'am. When we get the first, the first cut, we can iron out all our differences and make something happen. With that being said, we'll open up the public comment. Yes, sir. And I will say this, too, let me say this, when I went to code board, the thing that got me most is sitting in the back where Mr. Webb is sitting, to watch all the people that came up before that code board, they were wearing working boots. So that means a working man or woman had to take two or three hours out of their day to come sit through code board, to go through and be given his fine or whatever, and try to justify the corrections he made for whatever happened. But that really got me, when I watched people come walking in with, with work boots to come see code board. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Mr. Gamber, my name is Terrence Marshall, I'm the owner of.
Hold up closer, please, sir.
I'm the owner of Terry's Backyard Barbecue, and I've sent you an email on the 21st of last month. Well, I work three days a week, three to four, so back in October, Mr. Lewis told me to cheap him off my back, to call in and let him know what I was going to do. So, you know, I would call in every Wednesday, let him know I'm getting my trailer prepared for Thursday. I go up to Salvestein, have to be there at 7 o'clock, come back, get it ready for Friday, I'm in town, come back, get it ready Friday night for Saturday, and it's gone Saturday night. And all of a sudden, the 20th of last month, the 18th, they called me and told me I couldn't do that no more. I'm storing the trailer. I said, I'm not storing the trailer. I said, they told me that I had two hours. There's no way that we can get a trailer, food trailer, cleaned, reloaded, two hours, take it back to the, to the storage place, get up, go get it in the morning, when you go in the opposite way. You know, it doesn't sit there, but that I can have my boat in the front yard before You know, it doesn't sit there, but that I can have my boat in the front yard for four days, as long as it's gone three days. My trailer's always hooked to the truck, and I just ask, you know, for y'all to give us some leniency on that, that's the way we make our money. You know, right now, I go to the hospital in Palaca, I have to be there seven o'clock in the morning. I have to go to Palaca, get a hotel room, just to be there on time. Other than that, I have to go with my trailer, take it back to Bunneal, get up, go get it from Bunneal, and then bring it back, or they're gonna give me a ticket. So I'm hoping that y'all will include, you know, the food trucks in with it also, because my food truck don't weigh three thousand pounds. You know, so, I put it in the driveway, not a problem, I still get my son's car in there and I get my wife's car in there, it's never in the road.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you, yes, sir.
Eddie Lang, R Section, so, it's kind of perfect that he kind of stepped up here, because that was gonna be my response. The one, I, I, look, I have a lot of people, friends in the building industry, they have trucks, they, they work, the ladders, the whole thing. So I, 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 I see that issue and I understand, but at the same time, you opened it up to one, now, you, food trucks just came up, he wants to put food trucks. Then you're gonna have the trailer people say, we want to put my trailer in driveway, then you're gonna want the boat people to say, I want to put my boat in the front, so when does it stop? So, 'cause we, we don't live in HOA, I never wanted to live in HOA, I don't live in HOA for that reason, but a lot of people move here, me being a real tour, a lot of people move here because we're like in HOA, because we have that, that appearance of a beautiful neighborhood. I don't mind the work trucks sitting in the driveway, I really never did, I take my magnets off of my car, even though they're three feet or whatever it is, I usually take my magnets off at night anyway. Um, my neighbors have never complained, but when does it stop, though? Because that was a perfect example, and me coming up behind him, he's asking for food trucks, which, listen, you want to put your food truck next to my house, I'm a big guy, I'd, I'd be happy to have you parked next to my house. But, but at the same time, when does it stop? Because now you're gonna have the boat guys come and saying, well, we're in Florida, we, everybody has a boat, why can't I have my boat there, why can't we have the trailer there? When does that stop now? And I think you're, you're kind of going to the weeds now. I understand the, the work trucks, the van, like, a normal van with a rack or your Ford F-150, makes sense, I mean, they're just normal cars, but now, I mean, you really have to kind of put a, a limit on it, because thi- this is gonna come back with trailers, boats, food truck. Everybody's gonna want something now, because you're saying, well, you let these guys do it. So, that was my, wait until after, thank you.
Thank you, sir, yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Gene Knight, uh, eighteen-year resident of Flagler County in Palm Coast, and, uh, I'm an entrepreneur and a small business owner. The business that I have, I run out of my home, it's me and a truck. So, my truck is, is wrapped, basically, it's not a full wrap, but it's wrapped, has graphics on it. Uh, currently, there's three leans on my home because of the truck being in my driveway with over ten thousand dollars worth of fines, even when I was covering it and things of that nature as well. Um, my business is based on referrals, uh, word of mouth, and my truck. Vehicle wraps generate between sixty to eighty thousand, uh, impressions a day, depending on the market, maybe not so much here, but let's say Orlando, but I drive my truck from Volusia County to St. Johns County. So, all these people that see my truck, I get so much business off my truck, it's incredible. Uh, I don't know where my business would be without that. Um, my graphics are very, very clean, very classy, very corporate-looking, um, it's a pickup truck, so it's not like it's a, you know, a tractor-trailer or anything. None of my neighbors have complained, and I know that for a fact, because I go in and I look at, at all the violations, and I know that none of my, my neighbors have complained, so I know that for a fact. Um, the population here is growing exponentially, and if you're not gonna be supportive of small businesses, businesses like mine that support the community, that, that I have a service business, the majority of the people that I deal with are elderly folks, so, and I, I have a handyman business, so the majority of people that I deal with are elderly folks who need my services, and I, my phone's ringing off the hook every day for people like that. I stand in people's driveways hugging them, because they can't afford to pay some of these bigger companies, so they, they depend on somebody like me. You're running people like me out of here, is what's happening. You know, if you're not gonna be supportive of small businesses like myself, then you're just running me out of here, and if I gotta go and live in Volusia County or St. Johns County, all it's gonna do is raise my prices and things of that nature. So it's really, really making it hard, so I love this conversation, I'm glad that you're having it, I'm glad that you're open to the conversation, and for people like us, we, we really need it, because there's a lot of entrepreneurs in this area, a lot of people that are part of the gig community, a lot of people that are depending on small businesses, and, you know, it, it's needed here more than ever now, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, yes, ma'am.
All right, God bless everyone, my name is Kiona Gordon, um, I'm a resident here, been here for over twenty years now. Um, I do own Crab Shack three-eight-six, my husband and I, we own a food trailer, not saying to park the food trailer there for multiple days, but there are times where we have to bring our trailer home, because we did a rodeo here in Flagler County, and now our new restaurant is in Putnam County. So instead of us at a late night, leaving at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock from an event, driving all the way to Putnam County to drop off our trailer, sometimes we may have to drive it home just to get some rest. So I feel as though it needs to be open, if we're gonna open it up to all the other businesses, why not look into the trailers? I'm not saying permanently park it there, but give us an allowance, hey, no more than five days, no more than four days, give us the time to bring our business home, pressure wash it, clean it, prepare, do whatever we need to do to get to the next event. We are, being as though we are mobile, we have to go way somewhere else to pick up our trailer, to come way back to an event, which is forty-something minutes away, kind of makes no sense. We're all in here together, we're all trying to make money, we're all in this county together, small business is what make up this county. If you didn't have these little crab shacks and these little restaurants, then we would be here, you know, going all over these chains, we do this to feed our family, we do this to put food on the table, my husband and I have ten children, and we've been pumping this out for five years. But to come home to where we live, where we pay our mortgage, where we pay for our property, and be told, you can't park here? I was even ran off by a law enforcement officer who threatened my husband to take our trailer and have it towed. That is unnecessary, and I'm only coming, I only came here tonight to address this issue, something needs to be done, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not saying we can park there permanently, as he was saying, when are you gonna draw the line? The line could be drawn with a timeframe, no more than X, Y, Z, but at the end of the day, it has to give us the opportunity.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is why I came here at three-thirty. My name is Sheila Hines, I have owned my home for twenty-one years, I've been a resident here of thirty years, and I too am a small business owner, and I have a trailer, I have
Sweet Sheila's funnel cakes.
And if you all come to Food Truck Tuesday, you might see me there. I have a small trailer, my trailer and my car fit in my driveway at the same time, just like this young lady, I work five days a week. I am a senior, I'm self-supporting, and as you all know, we can't live on social security. So, I started my business sixteen years ago, for ten years, I did it out of the back of my van with a tent. I am a sole proprietor, I run this business by myself, for, I normally work in the evening, I do a lot of youth sports at Ralph Carter Park, I go there at four, I'm done by eight. Now, I live three hundred feet from Ralph Carter Park, instead of going home and parking in my driveway, I have to go over to Tamoka, uh, Marine and park. I spend an additional nine hundred and sixty-four dollars in storage each year. I'm on a fixed income. I, I actually did the mileage, and total, it's about sixteen hundred dollars with additional gas and mileage that I have to spend to take my trailer to somebody else's property. I live in the hour section, I have one-third of an acre with a six-foot fence around my lot, I would love nothing more than to come home and pull it right in the backyard, then I could clean it, and I could get ready for the next day. I'm very good at parking it in my driveway, and it fits very well there, I do not have any complaints for my neighbors, my neighbors come to the park. Hey Sheila, where you gonna be? They stop at my house, where you gonna be next? We are a workforce community, I appreciate what you say about small business, we make up the city of Palm Coast. There are two large employers here, City of Palm Coast and Flagler Schools, the rest of us are small business, that's what we all are, we need a break. I am a senior, okay, I live alone, I do this by myself, this is a lot of money to put out, okay? I make enough to pay my bills, I'm a homeowner, and I'm a thirty-year resident, and I want you to consider the trailers. There are many people here, plumbers, everybody's got a trailer, if the trailer and the car fit in the length of your driveway, I should be allowed to leave it. Now, like her, she may not want it all the time, I'd like to have my trailer there all the time, I don't cook any food, I don't do any processing, but I do leave it there and keep it clean, I like it to look good. Currently, it is not wrapped, but it's purple, so if you see me next Tuesday, Food Truck Tuesday, I'll buy you all a funnel cake, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Paulette.
Paulette Hatfield in the F Section, um, I'd like to just remind you all that, um, Palm Coast has a set of ordinances that were here twenty-five years ago. They were set by IT&amp;T, so, they were the ones that decided what code enforcement was really going to be like, and that was what our forefathers decided. I have another question, there is a gentleman that goes around, um, the neighborhoods and collects metal. It's a small truck, he puts refrigerators, washers, dryers, dining room tables, whatever, if they're metal, and then he parks his car in the driveway at overnight. It's a small car, it doesn't have any signage, is that permitted? That's my question, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, anyone else for public comment? We'll bring it back, oh, you can't speak again, you can't
I can't.
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Just one time.
Do you have a comment?
Bring it back to the dais, any, any more comments, do we have enough direction?
Um, I, I'm, I'm going to just maybe work with staff on our current trailer, and I, I just want to look at, relook at the code again. Um, I will tell you, thank you for bringing Crab Shack three-eight-six, my husband loves your food. I want to, we want to, I think we all want to support small businesses in the community, we just really have to have, there's got to be a line, right? And there's, there's got to be some type of integrity that is kept to the neighborhoods that people chose to live in, but I will commit to looking at the code again and, and just making sure that we can, I'll look at it from a legal standpoint, as far as consistency and, um, taking subjectivity out of it. Um, so, you're welcome to reach out to me if you want to have that conversation some more, um, but at this time, I think I'm, I'm happy with the direction that we're going.
Thank you, ma'am, could you get us a picture of your rig?
Me?
Both of you, can you, no, no, send us, email us pictures of your rig, so we'll know what you got. Yes, ma'am, thank you, anything else, you got enough guidance, City Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, we're moving on to paint colors, uh, E six presentation, residential exterior paint colors.
Yes, this is follow-up from your, this is an ongoing, um, project. This has been ongoing, um, for several different councils now, and we took your last direction and went through the committee process, uh, where it went to the BEAC and then to Planning Board, and, um, staff is here to present those findings from those committees based off your last direction.
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Ms. Tracey.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Tracy Doak, zoning supervisor, and here with me is Ms. Barb again, um, Code Enforcement Manager. We're here with the ordinance to amend the land development code as per the direction you provided on January fourteenth of twenty-twenty-five, and to provide you the feedback you requested from the BEAC and PLDRB regarding the ordinance. On January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, City Council directed staff to revise the LDC chapter so as not to regulate exterior colors for residential properties, except for the prohibited colors that are defined in Section fourteen-oh-two. Also, as a note for clarification, we are only amending the section of the code which regulates the actual colors, not the number of colors allowed on a house. Residential properties will still only be allowed one body color. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash XXXX, amending Unified Land Development Code Section three-oh-two-oh-six has been drafted, drafted to incorporate this change. The changes that the ordinance brings forth are as follows, in Chapter thirteen, thirteen-oh-two-oh-six A one was amended, so that the word residential was removed and only multifamily and non-residential buildings would be regulated. And thirteen-oh-two-oh-six B was changed to add non-resident, non-residential building walls to measurement of color, it previously included all exterior building walls. Also, in Section thirteen-oh-two-oh-six B three, letter B was removed from the prohibited colors for residential and non-residential, which stated that colors that are deemed loud, clashing, or garish, as determined by the land use administrator, shall be prohibited, because those were subjective terms that were hard to regulate. As a result, the prohibited colors would now include fluorescent colors plus any shade of purple, fuchsia, magenta, and orange that do not meet the pastel requirement. The definitions of the previously mentioned prohibited colors found in LDC Chapter fourteen glossary are as follows. Fuchsia, a dark purplish-red color, a red with a tint of purple or hot bright pink. Magenta, a dark purplish-red color. Purple, color combinations using reds and blues to include colors known as violet. Orange, color combinations using yellows and reds lacking visible brownish shades. Um, and I've given you all on the dais a paint color deck, um, the color deck has been tabbed to show the colors that would be prohibited if we move forward with this ordinance as written. Um, and please note, if the tab is on the top of the page, that entire strip of colors would be included in what's prohibited, and otherwise, the little tab would be to the right on, on the page of the color that would be prohibited. And this is only for one paint manufacturer, so, all of them would, we would have to, you know, pull out the fushias, magentas, purples, and oranges. Uh, on February twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-five, this presentation was given to the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee.
Can I just ask a, a question? These color, the fuchsia, magenta, purple, and orange, my recollection is this already, this was already an existing
This is exist, this, right.
So these are no changes, okay.
Exactly, yep. That was just to kind of show you that everything else on the fandec would be, would be allowed. Um, the committee reviewed the proposed ordinance amending residential exterior color regulations and found the following. Expansion of allowable colors, the proposed ordinance removes most resident, most restrictions on residential colors, allowing all colors except fuchsia, purple, magenta, and orange, with the intent to give homeowners greater flexibility in exterior paint choices. Discussion on additional color restrictions, some of the committee members also proposed prohibited certain red shades, reds lacking visible brown tones due to concerns over bright governmental or warning-style colors. However, defining these colors objectively, objectively remained a challenge. And the role of the LRV, Light Reflective Value, the proposed ordinance doesn't incorporate LRV restrictions, which were discussed in previous meetings as a way to regulate brightness and intensity. Public engagement and neighborhood character, committee members discussed findings from the twenty-fifty comp plan outreach, which indicated that residents generally preferred maintaining their neighborhood character. There was no strong public demand for a broader range of exterior colors. Enforcement and code clarity, concern, concerns were raised regarding the enforceability of color restrictions, particularly, particularly given variations in color names across manufacturers. Some members questioned whether the city should be regulating aesthetics, but instead should be focusing on health and safety concerns. The BEAC voted two to two on the proposed ordinance, with the two no votes wanting to also add red with no visible signs of brown to the list of prohibited colors. Because of the split vote, the BEAC did not provide a formal recommendation for approval or denial. The opposition, however, was based on the desire for additional conditions, not outright rejection of the ordinance. On February nineteenth of twenty-twenty-five, staff also gave this presentation to the Palm Coast Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, PLDRB. After hearing the presentation and the proposed ordinance amending residential exterior colors, the PLDRB had the following findings. Incompat, incompatibility with the comprehensive plan, the proposed ordinance contradicts comp plan goal one dot one, which emphasizes preserving the character of residential communities. The majority of the developed ITT lots, thirty-five thousand out of forty-five thousand, have followed the existing regulations, therefore, the ordinance would not be in the best interest of the established neighborhoods.
Ma'am, can I jump in real quick, so?
Ma'am, can I jump in real quick? So that, that was the previous comp plan, not the one we just passed, correct?
No, the one, no, the one you just passed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. The existing comp plan and LDC provisions already address color regulations. Policy 1.1.5.3C explicitly grants the city authority to establish standards for color, reinforcing that the current regulations are already aligned with the comp plan's intent. There was lack of supporting data. PLDRB members emphasized that throughout the year-long community engagement process for the 2050 comp plan, there was no public request for more vibrant or varied exterior colors. Instead, feedback consistently reflected a desire to maintain the existing character of the community. They noted that residents did not express interest in creating a more colorful or varied aesthetic, comparing a shift to a Disneyland effect, which was not in line with the community's vision. Concerns over enforcement inconsistency. Board members highlighted that the ordinance lacks clarity on enforceability, especially given the variations in color names across manufacturers. They expressed concerns that passing the ordinance would not resolve existing issues with code enforcement. Potential legal and administrative issues. The broad scope of the proposed changes could create future legal challenges and complicate regulatory oversight. PLDRB members argue that any future modifications should be more limited and specific. The PR, PLDRB voted seven to nothing to recommend denial of the proposed ordinance, citing lack of consistency with the comp plan, lack of public demand, enforcement challenges, and legal concerns. The members also suggested that if the city council revisits this issue in the future, they should provide clear data on community interest and a more targeted approach to adjustments. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Back to the dais for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you. Yeah, so the, the planning board came back with kind of a lot of notes. And I take some issue with some of these notes because it demands that essentially we provide evidence that we should become less restrictive without themselves providing any evidence of the, the kind of assertions that they make as well. Calling something a Disneyland effect without actually knowing like where it's going to go or how it could go. Stating that it's not within the character of the community. So should we have not, you know, changed the commercial vehicle, um, ordinance in this way? Because it's not in, and it's not compatible with the existing character. That, that kind of thinking, I think, basically says that we should never change, um, you know, with the needs of the community. So, um, I kind of push back on some of these, these, you know, these notes. I know, um, you know, they're trying to take into account a lot of different things, but, um, the other thing with the enforcement, I don't see anything specific about enforcement in here that explains why it could be legally harder to enforce than being more restrictive. So I'm not sure if you have any feedback regarding that in terms of how being less restrictive makes it harder for you to enforce.
Being less restrictive is going to have more colors out there, so we would have to go out and there'd be boots on the street, um, to check them, but.
Well, any change would require us to go through every, every street, right?
That's the planning board talking to you.
Yeah. No, I got you. I was just trying to get some insight maybe from you because functionally, this is, this is the job that you do, right? So, um, those are my initial thoughts.
Yes, fast, ma'am.
So my, um, my position on this is I, I liked when staff came back to us and presented a wider, a broader spectrum based on a more expansive LRV. I am not in favor of this. Again, I think that we need to look at, um, to your point, you know, being a little more inclusive as far as what we're allowing um, and, and allowing some change. But to me, we're going from one bookend to the other. We're saying, yeah, we have this LRV that we've been regulating, that we've been enforcing, that people move into our community because they like it, they're used to it. But now we're just going to allow all of these colors, except for what's in these very limited, um, prohibited colors, which in my opinion, how did we even come up with these? To me, when you look at some of these.
Those were pre-existing.
No, I know that. I know. But we're, but some of these, like, I don't, this looks like a more white to me, you know? So I, my point is, if you, if we're, if we're going to stick with these, you know, prohibited colors, how are we choosing that? How, or why aren't we just saying, let's allow all colors rather than saying, this is the LRV? I think we should get rid of the prohibited colors and just go based on LRV and that's it, because that's an objective line to draw.
But so the LRV does restrict based on the lightness scale.
No, I understand that, but that's a metric. Like, that's a measurable objective. Like, this is, this is the line that we're drawing it at and that's that. We're not saying.
I got you. Well, what I'm saying is like, for instance, things that are code compliant right now, I go down the street and I say, I don't like that. That's terrible.
I agree.
Someone else's opinion, they loved it and put it on their house. There's a lot of arguments by people that are made like this affects the, the value of my home. And there's no objective research that shows that at all. Um, nobody's ever been able to present that to me at least. So like these arguments against, uh, based on, you know, it hurts property value and things like that. Well, then prove it, show it to us. But I, the main thing with the LRV to me is that, you know, there's a shade of nice navy blue that looks great on a house with some white trim, you know? Uh, but there's, but there's an orange house down the street, you know, it's got a little bit of brown in it and that's code compliant. And so if we're going to be okay with things that to me are very, um, subjective in our current code, then why aren't we okay with somebody else's subjective value of what's good looking, so to speak?
Well, no, that's my point. I think that this whole, we're, we're going to prohibit certain colors should go away. And we're just basing it on LRV. And, and, and furthermore, my biggest issue with this, and I mean no offense to the homeowner that's in the, in the, in the, in the, um, crowd that initially kind of brought this, because it's your home and it's your right to come before us and ask for change. But we have had no public outcry other than this one resident to make a change. For the, for the work vehicles, we've been hearing people asking for this change over several years. Uh, same thing, you know, for the chickens, these people have been coming for a few years and I've seen the Facebook group. There's a lot more out there. Um, and again, I mean, no disrespect, but even in this issue coming before us several times, nobody else has come and said, hey, you know what? I also would like to see this changed. So we're, we're making a very, you know, broad brush decision here and going from one spectrum to the other, quite literally. And based on what? What are we doing for our residents that they actually want? I have literally heard nobody come to me and say, I want this representative. And so I have, that's, that's where a big issue of mine comes from, along with the subjectivity. I think it should be based on LRV, draw the line, line in the sand, this is the number that we're going to use, and that's that.
Sounds like a plan to me. This, the, the whole thing came up with Ms. Melendez's house during the old council with, uh, Councilwoman Hyder. Um, I, I own a paint company and I know the LRV and I know the darker colors fade quicker. But Ms. Melendez said, well, Mike, I don't care. If I, if my house fades, I'll paint it. I'll paint it if I, if I have to paint it. I may change my mind and want to change it to a different color. I, I, it's all, it's all about freedom and our, our running joke in our house is you got two colors in Palm Coast. You got Palm Coast tan and you got Palm Coast gray. If anybody's checking, keeping measure, gray is out. You need to get away from gray in painting your houses. So, um, did you have something, Councilman Cambria?
I want to hear.
Okay. Anything else, Fast Mayor? So what, what do we want to do? Do we want to just scrap all of it and just go with LRV? Because when this was first presented to us, they were proposing to ban yellow too.
Yeah.
There was, um, there, there, if I understand correctly, there's a current LRV value that's allowed via code. And there was a proposal to allow some more LRV, but it was not much of a change. It was slightly lighter.
A lot of the Bermuda colors, is that what we called them? Yes, ma'am.
And, and Ms. Barbara, really, how, how much do you enforce this? How many houses have changed their paint, had their house repainted because they were cited because of the LRV or the paint color?
Well, it's kind of been on hold until a decision is made by city council. I haven't done too much with it because it's been up here, I think, five times maybe. Um, so I've kind of put everybody on hold because I don't want to write anybody up if we are going to change the code. I don't want to see somebody have to go out and paint their house. So really, staff is waiting on direction from council before I go farther. Have I had houses changed? But not me personally, but has the board? Yes. Colors have been changed. I, I would say we're more reactive than proactive and especially since all of this has been going on. But there have been cases of color to co-board and they have been made to paint their properties.
Yeah. Well, uh, because I'm in the business, you know, no one wants their property value to go down. And, and, you know, you're, you're going to have some spite paint. They're going to paint their house a cer, cer, certain color out of spite because they had a neighbor that's made them mad over the years. And they're, okay, the city's going to allow me to paint my house any color I want. But typically, typical houses cost between $3,000 and $6,000 to paint. When you put that color on there, you know, a painter doesn't care. I'll tell somebody, well, Mike, I don't like the color. Well, I tell you what, I'll repaint it for you for the exact same price I painted it the first time. It's pretty simple for painters. There's, there's no gain in it for me. But I do know darker colors fade quicker and you'll have a, a, a dark brown house, uh, like up in the L section, we got a few of them. They look purple now because they faded within two years. So.
I do have a question though, because I met with Ms. Melendez and the, there was, on the application, I remember there was, um, either an ambiguity or something missing with, and I had asked at that point, because I do think that there was an issue there with that application that was filled out. Can we do a grandfather in so that folks that may have been in her position um, can be grandfathered in because of that ambiguity on that application? And I think there were only a handful of homes that it would have even applied to.
Yes. And, and you brought up a good point. What happens is when you're asking about color, when, when it goes through the building department and zoning and everybody else, they put on their application of what the color is going to be. Okay. And once it ends up a different color, you know, it wasn't what the house was, it, that's when the problem came in. And that's when the neighbor, when the neighbor called. So, you know, the original color was a tan color. Okay. And then I think there was a mix up between, if I'm not mistaking, the contractor and her husband as far as to what the color was submitted as. Is that correct?
I believe that's what Ms. Melendez had said to me, yes. But when it came in, it was, it was submitted to match the existing paint color, which was a tan. So we approved it because the existing, the addition came in to match. And then they painted the whole thing, the other, the blue.
Yeah. And I, and I think that there was, and, and I'm sure she'll come up and speak. Um, so we can, we can maybe clear this up when you, during public comment. But my point is if there was an ambiguity and it was on our end, we need to grandfather those folks in. That's my position because to me, there's a lack of due process there. If something on our side paperwork wise, even if color was stated to be one thing and then it changed to be another. Because if the, if the application itself was unclear or ambiguous, the homeowner may have thought.
Because of the blue.
Right. The homeowner may have thought, well, it's okay. It's allowed anyways.
So you're saying to grandfather it in and then if they were to paint it again, it would be non-conforming or to?
Correct. Yeah.
So I think the only issue, if I remember, was, um, the application said earth tones. That was the hang up there was we don't consider, consider blue an earth tone.
Well, that's. But it wasn't stated exactly that way.
That's bad language. Yeah. That should, you know, that's, I don't know if that still exists. Hopefully it's changed.
That standard that blue is considered an earth tone?
Well, it's defined on the color sheet. Um, it, the code is the code with the LRV and, but it's defined on the color sheet when they come in and they submit for it.
What you got, Councilman? Leave it? Leave what? Leave it the way it is? Leave the code the way it is?
I think we should expand it to, to allow the LRV, the wider expanse of LRV colors pursuant to what was brought before. You know, I think it is, you know, to your point, it's inching out a little bit more and allowing a little bit of change, but still keeping with that general character of the neighborhood.
So what's the, what's the current LRV?
Um, it's 25 for the earth tones and then pastels are over an 80.
And what did you all, um, present to us last time?
We had brought them down to 65.
It allowed quite a few more colors.
It did. We, we, and we added in like, you know, greens and things that weren't already allowed. We added in like the different, the lighter color. We don't use the word purple because that's prohibited, lavender.
How do we fix Ms. Melendez's issue? That's.
I think that's the grandfather in because of the, the ambiguous language.
Okay, so.
Is there a specific time period that this language existed that we'd be able to identify? If, say if someone else comes up and says, I have the same problem, um, that way.
Well, yeah.
We have a criteria for who's grandfathered?
I did ask staff for that and it was literally, I mean, a handful of houses.
Okay. So we, we have a list of people that would potentially be.
Yeah, it's in my email. I had asked for it a while ago.
Okay.
You have a list of those houses that would fall under the?
Yeah, staff sent it to me. No, it's not people that have come before us, but to the extent they, you know, became an issue.
All right. And to be clear, we're saying that any further painting of the house would then have to fall under?
Have to comply.
Well, and a lot of it, as we know, it's complaint based. So I know there's a burnt orange house around the corner from my house and I'm like, that house does not meet.
No, 100%. I think when we first discussed this, the observer got in a car and Brian and somebody else just went around and they were like, I don't think this is by code. I don't think this is by code. So. So there are houses out there for sure.
So we are.
The light Bermudas that we talked about.
I sleeve cut the keyboard. These are the ones that would be allowed?
Those are the ones that we had proposed the last time.
They're still all pastels.
I like them all. That's why I said, let's just do them all.
Okay, so, so we're going to go, we got it. Expand, expand as previously suggested. And grandfather in those people that are on the books is saying, hey, there was ambiguity in the ordinance? Is that the guy, is that the guy that's from council?
That is clearly identifiable, right? We know which folks filled out that specific application. I remember you all had sent me a list, right? So we're not, we have a defined amount of people, right?
That are, uh, that are in the grandfathered stage, who's suggesting, yes.
Yeah, as long as we're not.
That we're aware of. And then anybody else, then that would be a new, um, era, either that.
And we're still going to have those residents say, I, I am a homeowner and I should be able to paint my house what color I want to. And hell with you.
I believe it.
As Mr. McDonald illustrated so eloquently the last time when we had this meeting.
There's people that are going to say that they should, you know, should be able to do all kinds of stuff in their own home and I get it, but, yeah.
So that's our guidance. Are we in consensus on that?
I'm good with it, even though it's not what I wanted.
Okay, now we'll open it up to public comment. No, Ms. Carol, you're not going to be able to paint your house, color your shirt.
I painted my house, Carol Stilton, I painted my house two years ago. And I went to Benjamin Moore in Sherwin and I had a look at these charts. Oh, you can't have this. You can't have that. Oh, the town will come after you. Let me tell you, just right around, and look at the reds and the purples and the oranges. You people, I go to garage sales, I take my dog for a ride. You have no idea. The paint colors in the F section off of Old Kings Highway in the R section. There's little houses and they're painted red and they look like they were painted 20 years ago and they're ugly. So why do we pick on that lady with her blue house when I settled for a ugly cream colored house? The whole block is cream color. I don't live in a gated community. I'm not and shouldn't be, I think, uh, deprived of having a nice turquoise. But then the paint company says, you're going to, you're going to be like fined and you're going to have to change the color of your house. I think you're too restrictive and if anybody wants to think an ugly color, it's the color of this building. I'm sorry. Make it light and nice. My whole street is ugly. Potter Drive, every house is either gray or tan. Oh, I live in a tan house. Oh, a lot of people don't even have house numbers on their buildings, but you are too restrictive. I know it's nice to keep a community nice, but we're not living in a gated community if you're living in a residential street in a private home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Melendez.
I'm confused. Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So are you grandfathering my color in?
That's what we're trying to do.
Not your, not your color, your house.
Your house.
Because you, you and. Because you and, like, a handful of others had filled out an application that, in my view, was ambiguous. And so I think the application's been fixed, and we've defined it better now, but yes.
Okay. And the only reason I'm the one complaining is because I had a neighbor complain about my house. If, like, people don't complain. Like, it's your house, what do you care? So I wasn't trying to be an outcast.
I wasn't trying to call you out. I just was calling out the fact that, you know...
Well, and there's a lot of other people now, and since there is one builder in town that, if you go through, and I looked at his permits, he doesn't put, I don't know if it's a he or she, but the builder does not put anything but white on there, and his houses are darker than mine. And so, but, thank you.
How far are you gonna go to enforcement? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Paulette.
Paulette Hatfield in the F section. I'm confused. You're grandfathering, one applies for a permit showing that they want to color their, to paint their house a color, and then they change the color, and you're gonna grandfather that? I'm confused. Is that what the circumstances were? Because if that was, that doesn't make any sense to me. If you apply for, with a color, and you say, I'm going to paint it pink, and you paint it purple instead, you weren't given permission by the Code Enforcement Board, or, excuse me, the Code Enforcement Department, to paint it any other color than what they agreed upon that you had applied for? That's confusing to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stone.
This doesn't really matter to us, because when we moved here in '13, I owned property in, Carol owned property in Atlanta that we didn't sell yet, and I owned two condos in Vegas that I was still holding on to. All those free properties are gone. However, people wanna buy a house, and they wanna pick their own selection of colors. It's crazy that you tell somebody, you gotta paint green, or you gotta paint blue. And most buyers, when they go out looking, they will turn around and say, who? All the houses are white. Oh, all the houses are green. This isn't an HMO. This is America. They should be able to pick the color they wanna paint. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? We'll bring it back to the dais. Are we good to go?
Barbara, can you just clarify exactly what the application, as far as the language that we changed to make it more clear for the public, what we've changed on the application so that it's not ambiguous, and the reason why we had spoken about the grandfather? Because of the ambiguity in the definition of earth tone?
It was ambiguous. I think it was because when Ms. Melendez, she had looked up, she knew earth, because she called, and she had asked what, you know, what was allowed, I guess after she got her code violation, and we had said earth tones. Well, she looked it up, and if you go into Google, blue is defined as an earth tone. However, our code doesn't define blue as an earth tone. So that's where I think the confusion came in on her part, was when she Googled earth tone, blue came up, so she thought she was okay.
What does the application say now?
It says earth tones, but it defines them as brown, taupe, gray. They're defined pericotis.
So we specifically define the colors within earth tones, which we did not before?
No, we did. It hasn't changed.
On the application?
On the color sheet, right.
So it has, so it did say that previously?
Yes, ma'am.
The way it's worded, it defines certain ones, but then it says you can allow these colors for tones if they're a certain R V.
Has the application at all changed since she filled it out?
No.
Do we have it online somewhere?
If you go into the building, the building homeowner online portal, like, you're gonna apply for a permit, it's in there?
Well, okay, so this issue, we can, we don't have to figure out tonight. What we do need to figure out tonight is how we're going to broaden the colors. I wanna look into that issue, because if homeowners are not being given clear direction, and they do something because they haven't been clear direction, that, to me, is on us. But in this instance, I think we need to figure out if that actually happened, but it doesn't have to, we don't have to figure that out in this moment. What we do need to give direction to staff on is how we're going to amend the ordinance.
So the direction should be, bring back the ordinance when you guys brought us these, and we'll try to grandfather her house in, or the other houses that are in that list that the Vice Mayor has. I personally, I personally don't, I don't, I don't care. I really don't, unless it's some, you know, and then that's a personal, if it, like, the neon colors and stuff like that, but, and like I said, there would be people painting their houses out of spite, but most homeowners want to maintain their value of their homes and have it aesthetically pleasing, and not to make their neighbors mad, but, you know, we are in a crazy world.
Well, in your business, it's almost infinite, the number of colors you can have.
That whole wheel?
Yeah.
Goes on forever.
Right.
Like, these grays.
Jason, are you bringing it up?
I've seen a house painted that color here in the city. There's no way that color meets the LRV, because that's gonna fade quick. All these grays that are in that shade there, in those palettes?
City Council, if you look at your screen, they're bringing up the form now.
Vice Mayor?
What's that? I see it. Oh, yeah, thank you. So it is defined. I mean, it says earth tones, and then in parentheses, shades of brown. Sorry, I was under the impression that that was not in the application previously, that it just said earth tones shall have an LRV of 25 or greater without having something in parentheses.
When I called in, I was told earth tones, they didn't define anything else. I didn't, I have never seen that sheet before, because I didn't fill it out, because I don't do it. So I called in to get clarity, and they said earth tones, and I said, okay. So I'm aligned, I got earth tones, and that's it.
One search.
And that might be true. I believe the contractor said that it was going to match the existing structure, which at that time was a beige.
So our guidance is, what's the recommended LRV that we're changing it to?
We're putting, moving it down to, everything down to a 65 as opposed to the 80 to add more color.
And that was? Recommendation.
That was our previous recommendation, yes.
That will expand our color palette for the city and the number of colors we can use.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're not gonna exclude yellow?
No, that was a suggestion by the PLDRB, I believe.
Okay. So are we good? Is that the guidance we wanna go with?
Yeah, I think that's a good middle ground.
Okay, any other comments? You got the guidance needed, City Manager?
Yes, sir.
I talked more about paint in the last six months. Okay, all right, that's it for that subject. Thank you, ladies, and now we're gonna move on to E8, City Charter Review?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, per your request, you asked for a presentation regarding conducting a charter review, and Mr. Duffy is here to present that to you. The process is outlined in your charter, and...
You have to start this by November, correct?
You can start it now, yes, for the 26th election, but it just has to be done by the 28th election. So it's just, do you wanna do it now, or do you wanna wait and do it again? So go ahead, Marcus.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Marcus Duffy, your city attorney. So as requested, just as a review of what the process is by defining our charter for our charter review. So, under Article 92A, the charter shall be reviewed no later than April 1st, 2028, and 10 years after that. That's the minimum requirement. I'm gonna move this mic a little bit back. So, under 2B, it requires that there be a five-member charter review committee that is appointed. Each member of council and the mayor shall appoint one person on this committee. And this committee is funded by the Palm Coast City Council. So, at the minimum, if we want to add something to the November 2026 general election, the entire process needs to be completed by April 1st of April 2026 to make sure we meet those requirements. Does that confuse you, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm just trying to think of when would be the best time to have it on the ballot. I don't know if it would be during a presidential or the 26th.
So the next general election, so that is the next, the general, that'd be the next time you couldn't have?
That'd be the gubernatorial.
November 26, but you gotta think about the voter turnout in a midterm election.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to push for.
So you also have to hold at least two public hearings before anything can be put on that ballot as well. So, what, you know, reviewing your charter and working with our other clients, our recommendation is that for having this committee, that you should start an application period, like you do for your other boards, do the appointment process, and then on that committee, have them meet, I think, hold a public workshop in, at least in each district. I believe when you did this previously, that happened. They had the meetings, I believe, at the local schools, so Buddy Taylor and E. Trails.
So a workshop for resident feedback in each district to express their views on potential changes?
Potential changes, and then take that, and then we always advise that you hire a consultant to facilitate this process and help with the committee. Try to do it in two minutes or less.
So just, we've heard a lot of things from the public regarding the charter. We would wanna make sure we do a robust public education campaign to encourage participants to come to these sessions held in each district. And previously, when this is done, we worked with the Florida League of Cities to help provide a consultant or a facilitator to navigate those discussions.
And just one additional thing, so just so that the public is tracking. So the point of this committee, they would make recommendations if there are any changes, and then it's ultimately the city council that would make a motion to add these changes on the ballot.
So, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I was just gonna ask, in terms of changes, right? So if you have a change here, and a change here, and a change here, are all of them intertwined into one amendment? Or would they be broken into potentially, like, separate things that are not kind of...
It would be yes, it'd be one big amendment, but be different ballot questions.
Okay, just wanted to understand how that would look at the end.
Okay, so we could have a hodgepodge of ballot referendums that pass?
Or vice versa?
Pass or fail concerning the charter.
Something could be failed.
But, I mean, you could get a bunch of recommendations, but the city council does not want to make those recommendations, so it doesn't go forward.
You can narrow it down to specifically.
Is there, it would have to be that way, or is there any leeway to break it up?
I think that's something we can work through the process.
Okay. My main concern is, like, say if there's, like, five things that I think everybody wants, and there's one thing that may be close to 50/50, I don't want the whole thing to fail because of one issue, where five good changes to it are then stopped because of, you know, potentially one controversial change or something like that.
No, you could make separate motions.
Okay, cool.
So technically, we could go through the whole process of amending the charter, and then the voters could say, nope, don't want it, we're gonna keep the charter the way it's written.
That is correct.
Okay. Is that it? Any further, anything else from the, yes, City Council?
No, I just think this is, I think it's a great approach, and, you know, the last thing we wanna do is try to rush any analysis, you know, and changes, and then brought to us, and, you know, more changes. I think it gives us time to work through all of it, so we can get it right the first time, and get whatever recommended changes are what we decided to go onto the ballot for our residents to consider.
Yeah, I think this is great. We definitely have a lot of shortcomings in our charter as it currently reads. We've had some challenges, obviously, so I think this is a great initiative. I would like to see, I don't know how everybody feels about the application process, I would like maybe no longer than 30 days? Is that, I think that's probably a sufficient amount of time?
I think that should be plenty of time for people that would wanna contribute to this to get in an application.
Anything else?
Well, I just say, in general, on most of these documents that we try to change and observe, a lot of them are subjective, probably intentionally, and they cause problems that we face all the time. So the less subjective, we can make it, the better.
Well, we know that coming from the state legislature. A lot of them are hard to understand, but as in, the one for us to challenge from Alan Lowe, the judge said, hey, well, people should be able to read and understand what they're reading, pretty much. Mr. Duffy, right? That's what the judge said? You should be able to read and understand what you're reading.
As long as you give them enough information.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, we'll open it up for public discussion. You got anything? Anybody got anything? Seeing no one come forward, so our guidance, going forward?
Is move forward with the Charter Review Committee an establishment, and we'll work with the Florida League of Cities? And the next time you would see this would be applicants have applied for the positions in your district?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to...
Hey, I do have a quick question. So, Mr. Duffy, so we get applicant pool that comes in. It says here that we each get to make an appointment to that committee?
That's correct.
Okay, so each individual member's gonna make a decision based on the applicant pool?
That's the way the charters read, yes.
Right, so rather than motioning and getting three votes, it would just be each of us choose one person?
Choose one.
Can I just ask one more question, kind of related to that and Ms. Stansel's comment from earlier in public comment? Do you want to interview the candidates here in a public meeting? Do you wanna do that on your own accord? Do you wanna have some sort of voting process?
I think it would be individual, if we appoint one each.
It's an individual decision, right?
Yes.
So you want to vet your applicants before the meeting, we're just having the meeting for you to make your selection? You're coming with your name that you're going to pick? I'm just trying to work through it with you guys, because we're gonna get the questions.
Well, I think the problem with going, like, restrictive, like, if we're gonna cut it down to a list of finalists, then you're still kind of restricting what the charter says, that one, we get one appointee, so, like, it's all a personal decision at this point, I guess, is the way the charter reads for each of us.
Which is different than having three votes for a committee.
It's a different process.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Maybe that needs to be reviewed, too.
We just have to have an application process, then we can say, say, if I want John Smith to be my, say, hey, apply, and I'm gonna select you. Would that be how it works?
It's your process. I mean, you just tell me how you want us to organize it.
I mean, that could be potentially the way it works for one council member versus another, could just, if you've got 20 applicants, I'm choosing between the 20, you know, the 20, so it just depends. If you have a specific person in mind, just ask them to apply.
Each individual council members have their candidates that apply for their slot.
And then we appoint at a public meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Are you good, City Manager on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we going on to E9, City Manager's search?
Per your direction, Mayor and City Council, we have the brochure ready to go for the 90-day period, and Ms. Fuller's here to take any questions. It'll be an open application on our website, and then you will get a link to the portal where you can review the resumes every week.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Fuller?
Renina Fuller, Director of Human Resources. I did take out all of the information about SGR, and I'm working with our IT department to determine how we can facilitate getting you the resumes in a portal where you can see them at your leisure. So I didn't know if there was any, anything in the brochure, the current brochure that you wanted to have any changes.
Does anyone have any input?
I didn't have any changes for the brochure, but on the ad language that's used in the previous search, is that what you're suggesting we use in the current ad?
I can change that if you desire.
Yeah, no, that was just a question, because you said you took out reference to SGR, so I just wanted to make sure. I, I would like to see in the third paragraph, reference to the importance of experience managing large budgets and, and staff. Because we have both of those things, so, obviously, would ask for consensus, but we don't, there's nothing that references that surprisingly in the ad, so I would like to see something to that effect.
Absolutely, if, if there's a consensus.
Consensus for that? Okay, that's fine. Anything else?
I just listed some of the places that I thought we could do some advertising based on some information I got from ICMA. So, if there's any place on here that you would like to or not like to, you can let me know. I did just want you to know on the Indeed and the LinkedIn, how that works, it's a sponsored position because they get like fifteen positions posted per second on Indeed and LinkedIn. So, with the sponsored positions, they appear more often and for a longer in the search results than the non-sponsored positions, and this makes it more likely that the position will be seen by the candidate that you're looking for.
How much does it cost you to list a job on Indeed?
It's free, however, if you wanna sponsor it, then it's based on a budget, so they recommended three thousand dollars, right? But they also give examples of like fifteen thousand dollars, so it's really at your discretion.
We're not gonna go that far. Oh, man. All right, and how soon, how soon are you gonna have it up, Ms. Fuller? When are we looking at getting it up on, and running?
Well, I should be able to get with our, are you want it running, like, say, this weekend if I can get with our IT to get it posted?
I thought we were gonna wait ninety days, wasn't that our consensus last?
Yeah, we were gonna have it open for ninety days.
Open for ninety days? Oh, okay, my bad.
Because I think we, don't we have to continuously be in motion of, in search?
Yeah, I was saying delay, but you guys said no. Let's keep it open for ninety days. All right, so any other feedback? Are we good to go? Post it? Salary range, all that? Degree, background? Okay. All right, anything else on the dais? Open up public comment, anything? Everybody have any comments? Everybody's ready to go home. We're at twenty minutes. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll come back to the dais. You got your guidance, Ms. Fuller?
Yes, sir.
So, we're good to go? Okay, our last, we'll move on to item F, our final public participation of things that were not on the, the agenda. You're becoming quite a regular, Ms. Carol.
Carol Stotin, I just wanna thank you, Mayor, and whoever else was involved in getting the noise stopped on my manhole cover. It's taken me four years. And guess what? I'm going to be eighty-six years old and I thought I needed a hearing aid, and I saw all these cars going by and there's no noise. And there was the manhole cover fixed. And the man Jim called me the next day after I brought it to your attention at a council meeting, and he said, Jim, we've got so much work on Putter Drive, but I'm gonna do the best I can. And guess what? They were there the next day. And now I can't hear a car going up and down the street, but I wanna thank you very much.
That's great, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for taking care of that, City Manager. Yes, sir. Effect, quick, efficient government, that's what you want. Yes, sir.
Barry Moore, I live in the W section. Why are we here at eleven o'clock at night having a city council meeting? Who are we? Why? There's six of us here at eleven o'clock. Are we here because we're worried about people that work during the daytime having access to here? If it's important enough, people take the time out to come in and, and do this. You guys have a ten or nine item, list of items on your agenda. It's taken you seven hours to get through it and most of those items have been kicked down the curb over and over again. How many times are we gonna have to hear about painted houses or chickens? This stuff has been going on for years. Once you guys come up with a yes or a no, stick by it. Quit with this wishy-washing, trying to please a hundred percent of the community with every single vote. That's your job, is to come in, not take the pulse of the, of the community. You've been elected because that's where you took the pulse of the community. Come in here, make your decisions, and let's move on and do things to forward this community and make it better. Why, we've got, we're here at eleven o'clock at night. There is no other city government in this entire country, and it's even California, which is seven-thirty or something like that. They're not, they're not doing this. So, rethink this idea and start tightening up your meetings. You know, put more time constraints on the communications that you guys are doing and make more effort on your pre-ideas of questions and things you need to know about specific subjects. Quit coming in here completely blank on everything. You know, it's just amazing. I cannot believe how much we've got city employees here that are sitting here until eleven o'clock at night, so that we can please who? All these working people? So, hopefully, you guys will start tightening things up with the way you're running your, your meetings and stop pushing things down the pike. Take care of things immediately and quit worrying about trying to please everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Paul at Hatfield in the fifth, F section. In defense of the city council, having gone through the Palm Coast Citizens Academy, I understand this is a workshop. This is the first and only time you all can talk about this in the presence of each other and be transparent. So, it's going to take a long time. You, you can't go behind the scenes and behind, in the kitchen and, and talk about what you're going to say about the next subject that's on the agenda. You have to be able to be transparent in the sunshine, and I understand, in a workshop, it's going to take six hours. If you're in, in Fort Myers Beach, it took eleven hours for their town meeting two weeks ago. They were there forever. There's a lot of things that have to be taken care of in a workshop. It's a lot more complicated. Your other meetings are going to be a lot more streamlined because you're going to have a yes or a no vote. You're gonna make a motion and you're gonna vote on it. So, thank you for all you do. Thank you and good night.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stone.
Yeah, I'll be very quick. I'm sure everyone wants to go home and go to sleep. There are a lot of people demanding, and this isn't anything against Laurie, because this goes way past this. In seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, well, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, this city had plenty of money. It started disappearing in nineteen, and it got worse in twenty and twenty-one. Money just disappearing from the city. A lot of people want the highest audit possible. Nothing against us, but everybody knows money has missed from this council and the tenants, the people that live here, we shouldn't have to pay the price. So, if you're not high in anything, or previous city council people, or previous city mayors, do it. Do it the right way. Go to the most professional way and get answers. Years ago, there was a lady in, I think in twenty-twelve, and mostly you know the story, and May Mike, I don't think you know, she was run down like a dog in the F section. You had a police chief that backed somebody who worked in the school system over at Flagler County corroborated a crazy story. You gotta start doing the right thing for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais for closing discussion by city council members, not on the agenda.
Trying to be quick here so we can get out of here. So, I had the opportunity to go to Flagler Cares, which is a nonprofit in the community that kind of coordinates a lot of other different care for people, and so, they do have a proclamation on our schedule for a business meeting. I don't know if they requested that specific date, but I was gonna ask consensus to have them come present what they do, just so we have an idea of what they do. They gave me that presentation at their office, but thought it would be, you know, helpful for everybody to kinda see what they do. We were talking about homelessness at one point, mental health and things like that, and I think that's what prompted them to reach out to me. So, just wanted to kinda allow you guys to see that, too, if you guys want to.
No problem.
So, I don't know if it would be appropriate for a business meeting, but I was thinking, since they're already coming for one meeting, maybe the same day, but I don't know, so.
We can coordinate.
Okay, other things. So, Colby Cronk won, they say championship for, let me make sure I get this right. Shot put for FPC, not Matanzas, just wanted to make sure I didn't use the wrong high school. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, so, a local kid, and I think it's the second time, so, back-to-back. And so, we're kind of in like playoff mode of spring sports, so there's, I'm certain there's gonna be some more stuff going on as well. I haven't checked on Matanzas softball, but they were the number-two seed and they won their first game, I know that, on a no-hitter by their star pitcher.
That's a, she can pitch.
She's also a University of Florida commit.
Right.
So, she's gonna be running.
Seventeen strikeouts, is that what she had?
Yeah, it's, she's, it's crazy. I think she's given up five or six earned runs the entire season, so, when she's pitching, they're locked pretty much to win. I don't wanna jinx anything, knock on wood. And then getting into the Gators, Florida Gators took two out of three versus the number-one Texas baseball team this past week. We got one more series for the season, and then the, the Gators softball team was just seeded as the number-three overall national seed going into the softball tournament, so they'll host regionals and superregionals if they win their regionals as well. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Gabero?
Good meeting, thank you.
Council, Councilman Stevens?
Sullivan?
I mean, Sullivan, good night, you know.
The only thing we have is, you know, the Matanzas High School had their ribbon cutting while we were having the meeting this evening, and so, that's, that's progress, and I was out there when they did the ribbon, or the groundbreaking, and so, I'm glad we finally got done.
They need their room.
Well, yes and no.
That's it.
Just really quickly, thank you all for the deliberations tonight. I think we got a lot of really good things across the finish line, so I appreciate the deliberation. Touch a Truck is on Saturday, super cool event for the community, and also Flagler County Cultural Council has their Spring Fest at the same time at Town Center, so definitely take the family out and check out those awesome events. Touch a Truck is the best, so definitely try to get your family out there if you can.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Do we know if there's gonna be free Chick-fil-A out there again?
Not, not free Chick-fil-A, but the first hour is.
That was, that was quite a welcome surprise last time.
Horn-free, so those with sensitive ears and so, it's no loud sirens, you know, trying to help with that.
The kids that are, yeah, okay. One thing I have is, could, you were not at the FC three meeting, the last one they had, just yesterday or the day before?
No, it's in.
Okay. Could we possibly get the audio of that meeting? Because they said they, they recorded, could we get the audio for that meeting?
Of the FC three meeting?
Yes.
Sure.
The one from yesterday. I'd like to have an audio for that. I will not be here for Memorial Day, so you're the lead on that, Vice Mayor. I would like to say that, you know, I don't wanna get into a lot of detail because we're almost out of time, but I will say that I have, I have not personally lost any soldiers in battle, but I have had a, a battle buddy and one other acquaintance that, that died during the invasion. So, it's, it's special meaning to me and my family, you know, I've had, I had an uncle that was captured in North Africa, so we've, we've had a lot of things that went on in my family, and I'm eternally grateful to our military members and, and our veterans and our first responders, and I'm sorry I can't be there, but this trip that I'm going on has been planned for more, well over a year, so I won't be back until the last day of the month. But, know that I'll be there in spirit and I'll probably give you a few coins to give out at that event. Mr. Duffy, you got anything?
No, sir.
City Manager, any last thoughts?
Yes, last meeting, you wanted us to look at transcript minutes for full meetings referenced to the ethics complaint. We don't do that as part of our process, it's, we only do summary minutes, so we have gotten a couple of quotes for that, and they range from a dollar twenty-two a minute to two dollars a minute for those meetings. So, it's anywhere between fifteen hundred dollars and nineteen hundred and eighty dollars, so, do you wanna?
Scratch it, we got it, we've got it on audio and video, so.
Okay.
Anybody needs to see.
That's where I was gonna go.
We're not gonna waste money like that, that's, that's crazy talk.
Okay, thank you for that revised direction and have a great night.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn.